We just wanted to state that the roving patrol is important to our residents and valued by our residents. And it's a service that we have had for about 20 years now and is built into the budget, the CDD budget that we pay our taxes into. And so we're asking for the CDD to support retaining those services. We also respectfully request that the Safety and Security and P-PAC committees be engaged so that they can develop a recommendation to the board before the board votes on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty Mantenfell from Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee. So tomorrow marks one year since you appointed me to the advisory committee. So with a touch point, if you have any feedback for me, please give me some feedback. I have a district email from Chelsea here and Laura. So if you have any feedback, please email me any feedback if you have any recommendations. Thank you very much again. How are the bridges doing, Marty?
I think the inspections have started yet.
Do you have an update on the agenda for tonight?
Thank you, Mark.
Next up is Robert Spencer from Mahogany Run regarding mitigation request for 12,000 gallons.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm not here as a griper. I'm very proud of Gateway and I am proud to say I'm live here and I try to promote it. And I've fallen on some difficult times in a decade and a half that I've lived here. I paid my water bill and not even given it second thought. As a matter of fact, you charged me for it and I have great trust in that process. But a year and a half ago, my house watch person moved and they no longer are there to turn the water on and off. I'm very worried about the lake and the water supply and so forth that we have. I installed two Mohn automatic shut-off valves. One of them were out. I had it replaced and both of them were plumbed in by professionals. And I have one on reserve actually because the water seems to eat that mechanism. Be that as it may, when my house watcher moved, it seemed like the roof fell in because my water guy, I asked him, please don't fill the pool unless you're there to turn it on and there to turn it off. Do not use a mechanical shut-off. He did anyway. He threw it in the pool when I found it. When we came back down, it was in the pool and it was overflowing. I do thank you as a staff for having people to go out and check it. I don't know how you caught it. And the six days that that was operating, it overflowed and we wasted almost 50,000 gallons of water. And then the calamity started. When I turned it off, I went out to check why it didn't shut off automatically. I or my house watcher, the new house watch person unplugged it. So it was not working and honestly, I didn't catch it. I didn't even look at it because of the decade and a half I've lived here. Everything has gone smoothly. But this guy screwed up and then I screwed up. But honestly, I ask you for two policy changes. Thanks for having the foresight to put it in the policy that you excuse mistakes by giving a 12,000 gallon mitigation to wasted water. But you do it on the wastewater, the sewer charge and not the water charge. In effect, when you put it on the sewer charge, you're putting it on water that never touches the sewer. It touches my backyard and other two other yards. So I ask you to change that policy to putting the charge on the water usage because I'm paying twice now for that water. I'm paying for the rest of the wasted water that the $12,000 doesn't mitigate. Plus, I'm also paying for the sewer.
All right.
So I'm suggesting that you put it on the water and 12,000 gallons is, I don't know how you arrived at that and probably it's enough for people that live here.
I'm just going to need you to wrap it up on your comments.
I'm not quite done yet.
Your three minutes are up.
Yeah, I allowed you.
I believe you're the gentleman that's contesting the utility bill. Is that correct?
Yes.
That item is actually up. It's on the agenda later.
We'll bring you to the podium. I have no problem doing it.
So your three minutes are up right now during public comment, but we will bring you back up at that time for that agenda item.
Okay.
And Robert, we all had a chance to read your notes. We're all familiar with it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next is Rod Senior, Gateway Greens Park and Other. Reminder, three minutes.
All right, I'm giving you an extra minute because I know you're going to ask me for it. You weren't going to ask me today?
Is that okay with you?
We don't want to do that. We don't do that, but you can go ahead and take another extra minute.
We have to be careful because we cut southern.
After a minute, over.
Yeah.
That's what I meant. Yes.
I just want to make sure.
No, he was a minute over.
Bob, Bob, congratulations on a historic win.
Thank you.
Great day.
It really was.
Good afternoon, everyone. The CDD tax component of our property taxes has increased from $630 to $950 in the past four years. For the first time, the CDD component is higher than the Lee County General Revenue Component. With local elections coming up in November and possible changes to the makeup of this board, I'm concerned about what new heights the CDD assessments will reach over the next four years and the negative impact on our real estate values. The 2024 budget is a 56-page, one-dimensional Rubik's Cube. I suggest that you ask Stephen Bloom to summarize all of our borrowings in one page. That means the $11.7 million bond, the $1.2 million capital reserve annual contributions, $14 million SRF loans for Lake Bank, 10 to 15 for new meter projects, et cetera. And then project for the next five years, the impact that all these repayments will have on our taxes. I don't think anybody knows the answer to that. It's difficult to get it all out of the budget. So please ask Stephen to simplify it in one page and have your public information offices circulating to everybody so they understand what we are borrowing and what we're spending and the impact on our taxes. Last year, I appealed to you not to proceed with the bond validation process, but to use capital reserve study as the preferred method of capital project financing, commonly used by HOAs, which essentially limits your spending to what residents have contributed. However, you proceeded with the $11.7 million bond, arguing that this is only borrowing capacity and not spending. We're already seeing the early results of the bond issue by way of spending on a lavish admin office, which is already in excess of $3.5 million and we still don't know the true annual operating and security costs for this project. Now we see a park proposal rearing its head again. Only three years ago in 2021, the district surveyed the community on a $4 million park proposal and the results were out of 900 respondents, which was a 15% response, that 89% wanted no increase in assessments due to a proposed park. This is a deja vu throwback to 2007 when the board tried to force a divisive $7 million park proposal on Gateway. Driven by personal agendas, Supervisor Carol Stanley from Pelican Preserve managed to get Pelican excused from paying for the park because of lack of access. That waiver still exists today, so I would ask the Pelican Preserve supervisors to be conscious of the tax burden on greater Gateway residents, even though you're not directly impacted. In 2007, 96% of 1,000 survey respondents said they wanted no park. It took a huge effort on my part to organize a Stop the Park movement that culminated in a showdown at Trinity Church. An input from State Senator Ehrenberg, who stated in his letter to Chairman Dora, examined the project's potential impacts with great care. Large numbers of my constituents in Gateway are opposed to the park project. Community consensus is important for this and I ask that you to keep the concerns of Gateway residents in mind. Do we really need to go through this again? With an 89% vote only three years ago, nothing has really changed. What part of no is not understood? Why even create a parks advisory committee? The survey sent out last week is just nothing more than a wish list. If you want to properly gauge resident appetite for a park, please include the option of saying none of the above to every question. Also, please include all costs, including debt, service, operating, maintenance and security. How about 4,000 feet of fence or wall around the entire Gateway Commons Park plus security access control technology?
All right, Rod. We just need you to wrap it up because.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's pretty well what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What else do we have? I had Tom Murphy. Did you want to speak? Regarding the park. Mick, can you state that again?
Tom Murphy, Stony Brook. I'd like to pretty much echo everything that Rod said. He's on the money. You have this Park and Rucks Committee that seems to be moving at the flank speed here to get this thing up and running and you're developing plans and whatnot. And I haven't seen anything where the people have said, yeah, this is what we want. And I speak to a lot of people and most of those people don't want that. They don't want the increase in taxes that's going to be. They don't want to have, God only knows, what people are going to be using this park or coming to this park or hanging around there late at night. They're not interested in any of that stuff. All of our communities that we moved into, they have amenities, whatever they are, whether there are a lot of them or a few of them. They have them and they're satisfied with those amenities and that's why they moved into those communities. And I am totally against this park and I think that quite a few people are. And I think that you should be surveying those people to see what they feel rather than just proceed with a project that you're going to spend five-plus million dollars on and we're going to have to eat it. And the money's coming out of our pockets. It's not coming out of the two people who live in Pelican Preserve, but it's going to come out of the rest of our pockets. And it's not fair to us that you don't consider everybody in the community when you're deciding to do these things. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Nope, I do not have anyone else signed up. There's no one online that has asked to speak either.
Do you have any local achievements and recognition that we would like to?
Nothing?
And no advisory committees report? So approval?
I do have one quick thing from the advisory committees. There was a new P-PAC member that was voted in last Thursday. I didn't get it onto the agenda in time for this meeting, but it will be on your first meeting in March therefore. So you can check that on. He'll be able to participate in their March meeting then.
All right, perfect.
So we can't vote on him today?
No, I didn't get it in the agenda in time. The next meeting is in time for him to still participate for March because it's before the P-PAC meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Approval of minutes? So moved. I have a motion in a second. I'm in favor.
Aye.
Consent agenda items? Anybody like to pull anything?
No.
No.
I'll move on. Consent agenda items, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, N, H.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I'm in favor.
Aye.
District engineer.
He's live.
We used to have chairs over here in the corner for me to hide.
You lose, you lose. Back row.
Good afternoon, everyone. Stephen Agapi, District Engineer, Tetra Tech. We have two items on the agenda today, the task authorization update and letter of recommendation, which is 11D. First up, task authorization, irrigation pump station generator. The generator is scheduled to be delivered January 30th, 2025. So we're just patiently waiting for that to happen. Irrigation force main improvements. We have received comments from Lee County regarding the LDO. There are minor comments just regarding previous DOs and their status. So we're responding to that and that should be resubmitted next week.
We're working through where we applied for that HM Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We're working through some of the requests for information that they've asked for that project.
So the next step on that is to prepare bid documents and let that for bidding. Griffin Utility Relocation. This last week, we received updated as-built data from the contractor. So we will be using that to finalize our record drawings. Lower Hawthorne Well, we got an email yesterday, today from the well drilling contractor asking for a notice to proceed for February 26th. So they will start mobilizing out this month to start drilling that well. Gateway's utility storage building, the building is scheduled to be delivered August, September timeframe and site work will start in June, July with the next expected completion date of early November. The admin building, we did hear from AIXA, one of the lead reviewers from Lee County, that we should have a green light to get the DO approved tomorrow. It'll probably take a few days for them to write it, but.
Carol, did you hear that?
I did. I see that on here it said 212, but I guess if it's 216, that's good enough, right?
Yeah, that was their internal review deadline, but yeah.
So they mess their own deadlines.
Yep.
Yeah.
So good news. Hopefully we'll have that in hand early next week. I'm not sure how long it'll take them to write it, but they said we'll have green light tomorrow.
So let's just say it's March 1st.
That's fair enough, yeah.
For whatever. What kind of timeline do you have after that?
So we actually have a meeting set tomorrow to go over the bid documents with Tetra Tech. So hopefully we will get those wrapped up. Once we get final permits, we just slide those right into that bid and then we publish it. It'll be out on the street for 45 days. And when it comes in, when the bids come in, it'll come to your next board meeting. So I'm.
So that would be mid-April sometime.
April, May, yeah.
Do we have a pre-bid estimate?
Yes.
Do. I don't know it off the top of my head, but you might.
Do we have a pre-bid estimate?
We have the 100% EOPC, yes.
Okay.
With a 15% contingency, which is high.
And that number is?
About $5 million.
And the original estimate was under $4 million?
It was 3.6, yeah.
What'd you say?
The original in the facilities plan for the bond was 3.6.
3.6.
So and again, that's that $5 million number is with a 15% contingency, which is a high contingency, higher than normal.
And we have that because?
The market's been very volatile over the last six months to a year, so. But that contingency is off of what? The base bid amount?
Yes. Even if you have bids, you're going to want a contingency to handle changeovers and differing site conditions and things like that.
Right.
3% to 5% is not unreasonable. So you're still talking about a healthy chunk of change at that level. So, but you don't do a project, start a project without a contingency allowance, both pre-bid and post-bid.
No, I understand, but I always thought it was about 10%. And this is at 15%. I was wondering if there was a reason why.
Well, when the bids come in, we'll make the determination at the time. We had the EOPC for this utilities building and bids came in at a quarter or probably 2/3 of the price of the EOPC. So until we get the hard numbers from the contractors, it's hard to tell.
Okay, okay.
Phase two, year two Lake Banker Restoration. The remaining lakes are 127 and 130. Last time I was here, Ed, you asked us to look into talking with South Florida to see if we could adjust those gates that we just installed on the flowway. And South Florida was open to that. So they're.
They were?
Yep. They said as long as we're moving water inside of our system, they were okay with that. So.
Wow.
No off-site discharging. So we would be in compliance with that. Just waiting a year back from Met Tower to see what their schedule looks like. They weren't anticipating that news. So they have some work lined up right now. So they're trying to see when they'll be able to, when we can all coordinate when to do that.
Well, our problem is right now, this is one of the first years in 20 I've been here, that we're at control elevation in the middle of January, February.
Yeah, maybe everywhere, yeah.
This weekend too.
We've always been.
Yeah, like an inch, I think, right?
Lots of it, yeah.
Well, and that brings up another point. If we're ever to control levels within our weers in our internal system, that's great to a certain point. But in order to discharge outside, which would probably impact our whole kind of pond, the water management ecosystem, I mean, we can control it inside, but if, and it's great that we have the flexibility. But unless we have the ability to control the outflow, we hit a certain point.
Well, the only pond that, ponds you're talking about, 127, 130, are unfortunately at the tail end of our system. So we got to rely on the two weers in Pelican.
Right.
To do our storage.
Correct.
That's our only choice.
Right.
Which there's, when you have one foot of water level that we have additionally right now compared to normally, you figure out that gallonage is over all of this deal. Acreage and try to take it and put it on half of our system. It didn't go up one foot. It goes up two, three, four feet and that just is not practical. So we're going to have to figure out just how much water we can get out of basins, particularly basin three.
Three. They're in three.
They're in threes where our problem is. Because it's right in the middle of the flowway and basin three is predominantly the flowway.
Right.
So otherwise, we're never going to get that basin three done.
Not. It doesn't look like it unless it dries up, but I mean, it doesn't seem like it's.
My thought is, this is to the point that we can, let's open those two weers in Pelican at two and three and get as much water out of that system such that we can get more into that system. In other words, we're just moving water.
Right.
But we need to move large quantities of water. We're never going to get it down.
And we're going to have a small window.
Yeah, depends on when the rainy season starts.
But if we open those two, and I agree with you, we open them, then we're not doing what South Florida said because we are sending it out of the community.
But we're. Touching base with Met Tower to make sure that they have the availability to do it right now because if they don't, then this is a moot point. But we are working to see and evaluate how we can keep it within the system.
Now's the time to do it if we're going to do it.
But the point I'm trying to make is everything I'm wanting to do or proposing to do is mechanical. You just lower the weers. Take them to the bottom and get as much by gravity water out of here as quick as we can so that we can supplement it and replace it with our water and then hope to hell we don't have any rain for the next 90 days.
But if you take it out of two and three, if you lower those two, it's still not going to go past one.
Well, I'm not worried about that.
We're okay. Well, we're still in our system.
Yeah, we want to get it down below two.
Below two.
Below two.
And if we keep it between one and two, then we shouldn't be violating or hurting anybody.
We shouldn't, yeah, shouldn't hurt anybody.
So more to come on that one. FY25 Design, we're wrapping up 60%. They'll be delivered to staff tomorrow for their review and then we'll bring that to the board in the following meetings. FY24 Lake Construction Management, Lake 78 is in construction right now. B&amp;Z is making good progress. They have a lot of the fill installed. They're starting to install fabric. And Brad Rogers with Extreme Divers is their sub who's getting Lake 82. He is projected to start next month on that lake. We did open the bids for the other ponds, lakes, and we have a letter of recommendation, which is 11D. So we can talk about that at that time.
Did Met Tower not bid on those four?
They did not.
And did, what is it, BW or?
B&amp;Z.
Be it?
B&amp;Z.
B&amp;Z, did they not bid either?
They did not, no.
What's the deal?
They, B&amp;Z likes to use their barge setup and they didn't think it was practical on these smaller ponds.
No, I agree with that. But what do we know about Cross Creek?
Cross Creek, they had great references for similar type of work and I believe they do some maintenance inside of.
They have done projects?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Pelican Pond 36, we've got a bid out right now. Questions were to.
Can you go open the doors?
I got it.
Sorry, I didn't mean you. I meant Chelsea.
Or was it Pond 36? Yep, we're going to open bids, I think, next week. Pelican or Public Works Storage Building, 60% is in QAQC. That will be delivered to staff next week. The Master Park Plan, Hall Montez is running that. They are going to be finalizing the master plan this month, February.
I think Chelsea had, like, Chelsea, okay, so Chelsea and I had a few conversations regarding the plan, giving the feedback we had. But I don't know if you wanted to bring it up to the board and have an additional feedback since.
You want to do it now or you want to do it later? Totally up to you.
We can do it now.
Yep, so the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee had a night meeting a week and a half ago.
Can have that.
And there was a lot of feedback from the residents, encouraged feedback. And so I don't think, I unfortunately wasn't able to be here in person because I was sick. But the intent is to only, this board has only approved phase, what I call phase one of the park amenities, which is the court sports, the playground and the trail. And so that is what Hall Montez is focusing on.
Splash pad, wasn't it?
I don't believe, it might.
Splash pad was on the budget for this year. Same was with the playground. It was.
Correct. So we had it.
Yes, because we already set the money aside for it, but it was, you know what I mean? So it's just going to be plugged in there.
So, but the key with this, the plan, approving the plan is you have a 15-acre parcel that you don't want to just carve out and only look at the stormwater drainage, the utilities here. You have to take into account really the whole parcel. So the intent would be to, when and if the board chooses to pursue the development order permitting process for the phase one improvements, again, the court sports, the playground and the trail head. Splash pad is to be determined based on the funding availability. And discussing with some of these vendors, splash pad is a lot more complicated than we anticipated. So, but the intent is when you go for a development order, you paint the picture. That way you don't have to go back at a later date and apply for another development order and another development order. So you get the picture approved at the county level and that design work. But when it comes to actual like building and the construction, that is a separate permitting process. But you have to have that development order, just like with our admin building. We had to apply for the development order. The county had to approve it, make sure we met all of the permitting requirements. And then when we go under construction, the contractor will apply for the building permit.
Yeah, so what I would recommend on that is, and I completely understand having the holistic picture in order to total understand what planning might look like over time. What I would ask our design firm to do is to create a layered visual. Because there's still some confusion on what is going in. And if we're using this as almost a phased plug-and-play type environment, I think we need to show, here's phase one, which is the administrative building. Here is phase two, which is the Commons Park built out with these selected amenities. And be able to say, layer it. Here's the property with administrative build and parking lot, whatever's part of that project. And then here's it with the next phase. And then, you know, then we continue to add on. Because it's confusing to the residents when they're looking at this. And I think there's various feedbacks coming from different factions. Some who have amenities in their own areas or don't plan to use it. They don't care about having a park. Other individuals in the community that have families or would, you know, see value in this. We just need to be visual and show them. And then we can, we know after the fact, we'll put pricing together for it. It's a complexed, long process. But I think the. But I think the visual is really important for us to help tell the story so everyone understands what we're talking about.
We can color code.
And I think that was my, like last week, you and I talked a lot about this, I had a lot of calls and like. When you look at this, it's really busy. Everybody thought, everything that's here, it's gonna happen right now. And that's what I asked Chelsea, like even today. We need to remove everything else that is not the phase one. Um.
Or high line.
Or or ju- just for the residents, because when they look at this and literally I, that was the conversation I had every day last week. I'm like, no. This is not getting done, this is not. And then they're like, well, why did you put this map out then? And so I totally get it. So at the end, it was like, oh, it's only this and only that. Okay, I can see that. So but I don't want it to come from me, I wanted to come from staff, a a something that is not this and.
We had, we had a call with Hall Montez um this week and Tetra Tech and that was discussed and that's the intent.
Yeah.
Okay. So so when the next time this comes in front of you, you will have the color coded map.
Okay.
The the thing you gotta remember is is a lot of that site work.
Yeah.
Have to be done regardless of whether or not you're gonna do, because it's in phase two, but it's tied in with phase one. Same thing with phase three. So a lot of that upfront cost is going to be on.
On phase.
Phase one.
Well, and two, and and I think there's.
And.
Yes.
Especially drainage.
Yeah, well, and I think too, if if you really take a step back and look at this, there's a ton of open green space. That we're not developing, you know, that will be green space. Um and if we do site work, you you've got to, you know, you.
Grade it.
You've got to grade it. And so um one of the things that we may do is instead of just sodding all that area, maybe we just. Um we seed it or we do things that are more cost effective, but I I I think. This is great for what it was intended for, which is, you have a holistic view. Now we need to start getting granular, so our residents can. Um uh, you know, can can consume it.
And I know that there's been a lot of question with cost um at the at the thirty percent design of the phase one improvements. You will have um an estimated cost from uh the engineers. At sixty percent, that cost will be updated. At ninety percent, that cost will be updated. Um so.
It's when we start making the decisions, what goes in financially and what removes out.
Yeah.
I get that.
Do you do six courts or do you do four two?
So I just wanna recap. So right now we're focusing on the courts, the pickleballs, the tennis balls, the bocce balls, right?
Yeah.
And the restroom.
There's a restroom right around.
And then the intro, the trailhead uh center.
And the playground.
And the playground, which is already budget for this year.
And there was.
That's the only, okay.
There was, well, there was a lot of concern raised too about a per- perimeter fencing and that's really, it's a board decision that we need to decide on. Um from a staff recommendation and what we've seen at the soccer complex or the pond park. Strongly would encourage a perimeter fence now, not chain link, you know.
Mm hmm.
Prison fencing, but um something that would match the community.
Okay, okay, alright. Thank you.
Of course. Um we don't have any development updates at this time um since last time. Um F G U A, the interconnect is uh scheduled to start in April. Um so you'll look out for that. Uh it'll be starting around Griffin Drive and Essex Square Boulevard. At the the rear entrance to Hampton Park. Some construction will be happening there in the April, the month of April.
Yes, a question.
Alright.
On um second to the last, on Prado. Um this came to the board because um Lennar wanted their bond back, their construction bond. And so we were working with the Prado community and there were some issues. That were discovered and they were working with you also with Tetra Tech to get those done and those were all. Written out and submitted to Lennar.
Right.
Is there a time period then that we have to wait until, because I if my memory is correct. It's been more than six months.
I'll do them close.
And we've heard nothing from Lennar. There's been no response whatsoever, or has there?
Carol, your timing is impeccable.
Yeah, I think Blake asked this week or last.
You're you're pregnant.
Yes, actually, I believe it was a couple of days ago. I did. I did receive an email from a representative from Lennar. Um I think they're uh from. The email I received, it seems like they're trying to settle with the HOA. Um and their concern is if there's settlement with the HOA um that. The bond at the district level gets cleared and gets returned. And that was, that was their question of how how are there certainties to this?
There's two components to this. The first component is ours. There are things that were not finished to bring them into compliance. With the uh permit criteria man. So there are things that are totally ours. That's why we held up the money. We also said, oh, by the way, our community has a lot of problems with you and we would very much like you to get those things done too. We can't enter, we can't hold the money back solely for the HOA's.
No.
But we can for ours.
And they 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 have a.
My question is, is there a time period that we can, you know, nine months, a year or whatever?
Force them.
And then, no, then we could use their money, the bond money. To do the projects, just the ones, not the association ones, but the ones that we identified that were part of the work that should have been done. For the bond originally. Is there a time period on that?
Okay, I'll have to go back and review the permit criteria manual and see if there is.
I don't believe there is. We did use the money in Pelican from W C I to do exactly what Carol said. When W C I either failed or didn't do it, when fixing their ponds, pipes that were clogged, the pipes that were missing, we absolutely spent that. We had to go through bond council. I don't remember all the thickens, but to answer your question, yes, there is a way to do it.
You have to make a claim on the surety if we do that. Otherwise, there is no timeframe to return other than.
Compliance.
Have them comply, yes.
This looks like a deja vu of Santa Luis. Dragging their feet, not getting anything done. This is ridiculous.
We don't have a bond on Santa Luis.
We don't have a bond.
Yeah.
Who who who's who's stuck on the deal on that, the HOA?
I think Gateway is. I mean, maybe it's probably both, like the lake bank. Uh I mean, they they are playing, they're doing stuff right now. They're not doing a good job and they're not doing it quickly. They're doing stuff.
Yeah, what I'm worried about is we're going to have a lake bank restoration project.
Yeah.
Before the ink dries on their paperwork, because it's looking looking bad right now.
Yeah.
We should accept it.
Well, that's my point, because we don't accept it.
Is it possible at our next meeting to have um a timeline or a process or whatever? Uh given to the board so that we can determine uh if we wanna start action right now and go out for bids on the work. And have the work done and subtract that from the bond.
Independent of it all.
Yes, ma'am.
And I I don't know if there is such a process or the timeline for it, but if you could let us know what it is. Because I don't, I don't wanna be sitting here in six more months and still having that the second to last item on the Tetra Tech report. Because we just haven't done anything.
But I gotta tell you, our portion of it's not a whole lot.
No, I didn't say it was.
No, no, I'm just saying, we were really trying to use that as leverage to help the community.
I just wanna know the process.
Okay.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
We will, thank you. Alright.
That was the last per task authorization. I do have eleven D. I don't know if you guys wanna talk about that now. While I'm up here.
Eleven D?
Yeah, let's just go ahead and.
Lock it off.
So um we did receive bids on the next.
Okay, lake uh lake bank restoration.
Yeah. Um we received four bids on the next round of lakes. Um the apparent low bidder was M R I at the time of receiving the bids. They were close to our estimate. Our estimate was about seven hundred thousand. They came in at seven hundred and eighteen. Um after examining it a little bit, if they didn't include de-watering, we asked the bidder if they intended to leave that blank. And they said it was a mistake and they mentioned they would like to withdraw their bid at that time, which they did. And then that leaves Cross Creek uh environmental as the the next low bidder. So we checked references on Cross Creek, they check out, they work in Gateway, um as far as I know, Gateway has.
Maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance work, yeah. So that is uh the next low bidder.
That's thirty percent higher, wow.
It is, yeah. Our, so our estimate was based on your historical low bidder, uh Met Tower, who hasn't bid on these projects, so.
I think we just gotta pull those and rebuild.
Yeah, that's what concerned me. Do what?
I I think we pull it, rebid it.
Rebid it.
Reject all bids.
Reject all bids and and rebid.
Uh what what does that do for us from a timing point of view? I don't disagree with that.
Could kill the time.
Kill another year?
Yes. Yeah. Everything's wet right now anyways, so it's no difference, so I think.
So I make a motion that uh and help me out with this, Tony, uh make a motion that we reject. The um.
Lake Bank Restoration. Yeah, reject all bid for the uh.
Like four oh two. Like big restoration um for fifty seven, one oh five, one twenty five and one twenty eight.
Rebid.
And rebid for next year?
And rebid.
And and have staff prepared to rebid.
Keep in mind, I wouldn't push it off because these are four small ponds. These ponds could be ve- done very easily by drawing them down. Pumping them down. So there is no reason why we can't rebid and immediately turn.
I would, I would, I would suggest rebidding immediately. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Marshall, do I have a second?
Oh, sir.
A second on favor?
Trying to get them back on schedule because uh again, these these are not difficult projects.
No, they're small, small ponds. Um Chelsea, what about the option that we took with the well? Would, is that viable at this point? Because we are receiving, we're receiving a lot of bids, which weren't with the well.
So we'd have to follow up with S R F and see if that they would, if they would allow us to, similar to what we did with the Lower Hawthorne where we showed. Um four different times the intent to bid and were unsuccessful. Um and then what we did was we solicited. Um quotes and um from various vendors, um meeting all of the supplemental conditions. And requirements of S R F, um and then took it to their review and consideration um for contract. And then um not that we've circumvented.
With that.
Process, but we made the multiple attempts and then um showed good faith.
I gotta get that.
Um I I have heard from other contractors after this bid was opened that they'd be interested in one or two of the lakes. I don't know.
Did we have a bid bond and what happened to the bid bond?
Um there is a bid bond on this.
Did we uh keep the bid bond of the low bidder that rejected or that withdrew?
That's not my decision to make. Um they just. They conveyed to me an email that they were withdrawing their bid, so if anybody wants to take action on that.
Idea of a bid bond is that it covers some of your expenses.
Yes.
And if if it was five percent, that's thirty five thousand dollars. So we're talking about a lot of money here.
Yeah, they, I think they're a contractor that does work for Gateway. Um so I don't know if you guys wanna go down that route. Probably weigh the cost and benefit.
If you're gonna do a bid bond, do a bid bond. If you're not gonna do a bid bond, don't do a bid bond. I mean, that's ridiculous.
We require, we require the bid bond.
That's, 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 this is a perfect example of why a bid bond is required.
Right.
Uh uh my deal is is uh uh keep the bid bond.
So yeah, you know, it was part of the motion, be a second motion, reject all bids, rebid, and then also make a claim on the bid bond. So was it both in the form of a bond or cashier's check and money order?
Find out from Randy on how.
They're likely, I mean.
To probably assure.
Fourth decision, but they're probably not gonna bid on the next round if the board takes that action.
Well, that's.
Well.
I mean, they made errors, so it's it's warranted. They messed up, that's their fault.
Use my my favorite expression, I was born at night, but not last night.
Yeah.
They see they left two hundred and eighty thousand on the table. You think they're gonna come back and bid anything that's got a seven or an eight in front of it? Ain't gonna happen.
So I mentioned them, like, you didn't include de-watering, like, they're like, yes, we did, and it's, we're estimating twenty grand per per lake.
So they're they're.
They won't, they're eighty eighty low, so they would come in at eight hundred thousand.
Their mistake cost us thirty five thousand, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. Fair enough.
I would suggest that um we either bid it, rebid it for the fifth time. Or we contact S R F and see if we can do similar to what we did with the Lower Hawthorne. And perhaps, like we mentioned at the last time this came in front of you, maybe split it with two and two.
Well, we already had a motion to rebid it, so that's done.
Yeah.
So now it's either we go and contact.
Yeah, then go to the state after, after we see the results of that.
It's done, so.
This is the third or fourth time that this has been bid out. And the last time you, I I pushed for you guys to rebid it this time and we were successful. We got four bids, but. Last time you guys wanted to split it up.
If we want to, if we wanna go to our residents and try to convince them that there are things that we need to be spending money on. To enhance the community outside of just straight infrastructure. I think we also have to do our due diligence and try to find value engineering and cost savings wherever we can. So we can't go and ask people to, you know, to be on board with administrative building or parks or something like that. And we're spending over thirty percent for projects that we set a certain amount threshold for. So if we have to push this project a year, it's it's unfortunate. But if it saves us two hundred five thousand dollars or something like that, I would much rather do that than to. Have to fight that battle of overspending on ponds and asking our residents to, you know, to.
So what what I would suggest is, we were successful in the Lower Hawthorne well to come in under the estimated budget by piecemealing it. I would give staff and the engineers the opportunity to see if we can solicit in that sense and see if we can.
Don't have a problem with that.
Why, why do we, why do we have to package this in the rebid? Just put them all out, they can bid one, two, three or four.
Because we've been talking about for, as long as we've been doing ponds. To absolutely hold our vendors and our engineering partners accountable for value engineering and cost, which should get cheaper over time. Now, again, that's before we prices went up and all, you know, um that stuff. But our whole premise was, we're gonna do this, we're gonna set a standard, we're gonna maintain that standard. And then hopefully we value engineer and and have cost saves as we get into year five, six, seven, ten, so.
Well, if you've, if you've got somebody that's interested in one or two of the ponds and not all four, then bidding them individually. And allowing a uh any one of these bidders to package it, let him do it. Let him get innovative and come in and say, hey, you give me four, I'll give you a deduct of fifteen percent, because our bottom line is what the total cost is.
Right.
Is this in any, how does this impact retaining the bid bond?
Retake, that's no separate issue. That bid bond just would be. Be ours.
So the direction that I'm hearing is to pursue a formal bid but breaking out the ponds individually.
And if they wanna bid it as a package, they can do so.
Yeah.
The the lakes that we have that they're working on right now, that was good as six separate contracts.
Yes.
It's just six times more paperwork that we have to do.
If I can just ask your question to a quick, Steve.
Thirty five thousand.
Getting back to withdrawal, did the bid, did the bid documents allow withdrawal of a bid once submitted?
Um that's a good question. It's gonna be in the I T V document, um which I think you helped Gateway prepare. Put it back on you instantly.
But they're not here.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh because one of the questions is, would the board want to reject all bids and maybe reconsider its action? Because if there was a prohibition against withdrawing the bid, would the board want to say, we're gonna reward the bid to you, you better take it. And then that's another reason to take the bid bond, but that's another.
Yeah.
But you 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 don't.
Since contractor M R I, but not that I'm trying to push you guys one way or the other, but we utilize them a lot on the utility side, so.
So why don't the uh, the action should be that with their staff or or engineer and go back and just double check the bid documents. To see, you know, if that is an option, and if it is, we can bring it back to the next board meeting. If it's not, then we we just continue, proceed with the motion.
Is to do what in? Look at the uh the documents that went out, invitation to bid, whether or not it allowed a bidder to withdraw their bid. And so the action would be to reconsider the motion that was just, was voted on correctly. Anybody can move to reconsider. And the motion be, first, there was a motion to reconsider and then that's a separate motion. Then the board can re- reconsider the prior action and re- rescind the prior action.
Okay, so I just have a question. So it would be either eighty grand or the thirty five thousand dollars.
Uh.
For them.
Yeah.
Well, we should do benefit will be, the thirty five thousand dollars will be better unless they cannot withdraw from the bid, okay.
Well, the fact that you've got four bids and you have that Cross Creek bid in there, uh I just think you're gonna have difficulty with S R F. They're gonna say, i- it is what it is.
Yeah.
Uh if you only had one bidder, then I'd say we have a a a track to go down. But if we take and rebid this and allow it to be bid in for and allow them to package it if they so desire. Our deal is, is to pick and choose what is the best combination for us, price wise.
Well, I I think maybe, maybe the argument might be, maybe the argument might be two is, this is the second time we bid, first time we got no bid, second time. Bids are coming in over, you know, some forty, fifty.
Yeah.
But anyway, I see what you're saying.
Well, it could be that any one of those two middle contractors there just looked and said, hey, I'm gonna throw in a bid because somebody may not show up. And then all of a sudden, I'm sitting here at one point six million, knowing that I got nine hundred thousand in cost. That that's a healthy day.
So the direction, just so I'm clear, is go back, review the I T V docs and look and see if that, if they have the opportunity. If they can withdraw post opening a bid. If they could, we proceed with formal bidding, breaking them out.
It was true post opening?
Uh no, they.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, any bidder can withdraw before the opening of the reading of the bid.
Yeah, it was after we opened.
Anybody.
Oh, it was after the opening.
Yeah.
So we'll.
This, after the openings, your your history.
So.
The action would be if the board want, is motion to reconsider. The action would be if the board want, is motion to reconsider the motion to reject all bids. If that passes, then the board would move to rescind the prior action motion and action to rescind all bids. And then the board could issue a notice of award to MRI. And if they don't sign the contract, then we can go after the bid bond.
Good boy.
Okay.
Good boy.
So you wanna.
The first most would be a motion to reconsider the motion rejecting all the.
That, that motion's been passed.
Not to reconsider it.
I'll move to reconsider, uh, the motion to reject all bids.
I'll say.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Call to vote on favor.
So now the board can reconsider its prior action and the board can rescind its prior action and then move on to the motion would be to rescind the prior action that rejected all bids.
I move to rescind the prior action that rejected all bids.
I see.
On favor?
Now the board can look at the, uh, make it based upon the four bids and recognizing that one bidder attempted to withdraw its bid after the bids were open. And assuming that the documents say you cannot, typically you can't after the bids open. That's the whole idea of a bid bond. Is, and they're, they're basing it upon a mistake of what they overlooked something. It's not a mathematical.
No, they forgot to include the price of.
I'm sorry?
They forgot to include one of the prices for a line item on the project. De-watering, which I mean, could be argued they may not need it, but they're gonna need it right now.
In other words, the entry on their bid proposal for de-watering had no entry.
It was just left blank. They actually didn't even use our bid form. They, they provided a total on our bid form and they provided their own scheduled values.
Which had no value assigned to de-watering.
Correct.
Okay. So the motion could be to award the contract to MRI Construction and issue a notice of award to them and then notify all the other parties that the contract was awarded to MRI Construction.
Typically, they have, it's a requirement of ten days. They have to act. It's, that's what they're most inspect. Is that what it's in ours?
We do that. And then if they say they don't want it, then they revoke the bid. Then we can then.
And then we can make the decision.
Then we can make a claim on the, make a claim on the bid button. Again, it's in the form of a cashier's check or money order or.
So we, so we can have, hopefully then a decision back before the meeting in March to take a second, make a different turn.
Okay, so what is the motion, Tony?
Motion be to, uh, award the contract to MRI Construction, Inc. In a total cost of seven hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents and reject their attempt to withdraw their bid after opening.
And authorize a district manager to take appropriate action.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I said.
And I have a second by Bob on favor.
Hi.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right. Y'all have a great night.
Touch base tomorrow.
Hi, big admin stuff. Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, under administrative agenda items, A, we have utility customer, um, contest of utility bill. This is, uh, one of the first that we've experienced since I've been here, um, that they have requested to come in front of the board. So what I'm gonna do is, um, I'll turn it over to the gentleman to come up and, um, give a little background. He, you heard some of it in the public comment. Then I'll ask staff to come up and, uh, give some background. And then that, from that point on, uh, both parties will be available if you have any questions. Uh, and then we're asking direction uh, from the board. So the gentleman is requesting, um, additional, uh,
Relief.
Relief for, uh, the incident that occurred. So if you, if you'd like to come back up. And again, just, um, state your name again.
Yeah, because we have the background and we've read it, so we don't need to regurgitate all of this. I'd rather just soon get to questions as quick as possible.
Okay.
Well, to reiterate, uh, getting at what you mitigate and what you don't and what it's based on, uh, as a member of this community and really an owner of all this process too, in a very minor way, uh, I tell you how I feel. I feel like to, to base the mitigation on a fallacious, I feel, uh, position that you're, uh, basing it on water that went into the sewer. When it went in, in fact, into everybody's backyard along my area is not right. I, I feel it's disingenuous at least. I think it should be based upon water meter usage, drinking water usage. If you give a mitigation, I think the, the heart is in that, that you, you know, people screw up. I saw a leak on Daniel's for weeks and weeks and weeks and it wasn't fixed. I mean, those things happen. I know human beings make mistakes. I certainly made it. In this case, you read it in my letter. But I think I request that you would base it and change the policy to base it on the water usage. And that will automatically then reduce the sewer if it not altogether. I think you should eliminate the, the sewer charge if the water does not go in the sewer. It's common sense to me. Secondly, I, I would request that you consider policies, uh, or procedures for your staff. This is the door knocker that they put on my door when they went in my yard, looked in the back and said it was a hose that was in the pool. They said they were not allowed under policy to go into the lanai area and turn valve off. But they did it. It was indicated to me that they discussed the ability to turn the water off at the street. But they didn't have the wrench. If they walked past my turnoff valve on the side of my house, they could also turn that on, uh, to off rather. And, and they could also turn off the valve that wasn't plugged in. But they could have turned the, the mitigation valve off to my, uh, uh, moan. So, uh, as far as I'm concerned, uh, it seems like, uh, you, you're doing half the work. You, you're saying, oh, we're gonna, uh, relieve this screw ups. Uh, but you didn't give your staff the discretion to, to follow through and turn it off. And they wasted another twelve, thirteen thousand gallons of water. Your person called me, but we were driving down when that was occurring. And we didn't have, catch the phone. So when we pulled in, I went out and looked and said, oh my gosh. The, the guy that serviced my pool screwed up. I think he let it go cause he, we weren't there. Uh, that's our problem. So I'm gonna have to take steps to pay somebody to come in and, and fill the pool. I don't want him doing that because, uh, he's a business guy and he's trying to make a buck and he's hurrying through. So those are my requests. Talk to your staff, give them a little leeway so they don't feel, uh, that if they try to mitigate the problem, they're gonna get in a problem and somebody's gonna screw up. If you have to have a waiver for people that go, uh, away for a period of time, that's good. I think it's a good idea on your conditions. Being good standing and so forth, but put a valve requirement in there and have you guys inspect it. So that's my quest. Uh, it's all potatoes, but by gosh, it's the principle of thing. I, I feel like it's, it's almost, uh, punishment. Uh, and I screwed up. I didn't, I didn't, I just assumed everything was running good and it wasn't. So, uh,
So.
I'll stand by whatever you say, but I'm telling you how I feel.
So right now, we're asking you for six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. And you're, you're saying that the bill should be two hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents, is that correct?
No.
Then he, what are you saying your bill should be?
I'm saying, uh, for the time of, of that quarter, whatever I used when, after this episode occurred or, or before, I think it was, was, uh, little before. This guy turned this on and, and screwed up. You make that charge. I'm just saying, I think your people could have mitigated it and didn't because they're afraid to go in and, and do that. Uh, and that's not right. We need to be able to train them and, and get them, uh, up to speed and, and let them make that decision.
Okay, what I'm trying to get at is what amount of relief are you asking?
In my letter, three hundred and some bucks.
So yes, it is, it is your, your question. Yes, because that's the difference between the six fifty-two and the two ninety. So that's, that's the answer.
In other words, I'm saying, I request the mitigation. I thank you for the opportunity to do that. But I also think that this could have been prevented very easily if they weren't timid.
Okay.
And that would have been another thirteen thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then.
Would you like to let Leslie up?
Yes, that's what I was gonna ask.
Okay. All right, so.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie, would you?
Leslie, Victoria, utility billing manager. So the charges are being contested from the January bill. The usage comes from usage that started on December twenty-first onto the twenty-seventh. The district office was closed. That was Christmas weekend. So during that time while the district office was closed, a total amount of thirty-two thousand gallons occurred.
Say it again.
Thirty-two thousand gallons.
Thirty-two thousand gallons in that three, four day period.
Correct. After that point, staff ran a report. It was flagged. We tagged the property and we've also made attempts to contact the property owner. Um, upon any visit to a property, we do not shut off the water to the house unless we have authorization from the customer. So we advised Mr. Spencer of this. He was not pleased. We recommended going to the pool company for those charges since they are the ones that left the water on. Uh, and he requested an adjustment over and above the policy. So he's requesting for an additional four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents to be waived from his bill.
But to be clear, you've already adjusted.
Correct.
To the administrative.
So the adjustments, uh, uh, maximum allows twelve thousand.
Correct.
The twelve thousand was deducted from the forty-six.
Thirty-two. Forty-eight thousand gallons.
From the forty-eight to come up with thirty-six?
Correct.
Thirty-six is what's in question of being billing?
Correct.
What's thirty-six thousand gallons water only?
Water only charges six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-four cents.
Water only, no.
Water only, um.
Water only.
Four hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
So if we charge him just for water that we bought and paid for from Lee County, it would be four hundred and thirty-two dollars. That's question one. Second question is, does Lee County give us a credit for the fact? In other words, is Lee County billing us for the sewer for that thirty-two thousand? So we eat it is bottom line. All the residents of Gateway eat the additional cost. And that additional cost is thirty-two thousand gallons times how much per thousand for sewer?
Sewer.
Six or seven dollars. How much?
Six twenty-two, six dollars and twenty-two cents.
Six times forty, that's another two hundred and forty dollars?
So to be clear, the resident request, and correct me if I'm wrong, Leslie. The resident requested or what is claiming is that if staff had gone on to the property and, um.
Turned off the water.
Turned off the water ourself, um, then that would have resolved this issue and that is not what.
That's liability all over. Yeah, we can't do that. We can't do that. Uh.
So the option, the, the recommendation that, um, we've provided is to offer a payment plan. And for whatever time period you feel, um, six months, I think is what was provided on the, um, recommendation, which is three billing cycles.
Three billing cycles.
Three billing cycles, which equates to about six months, um, and then offer that, that payment plan over that time period.
So we already adjusted. I do think, you know, reaching out to the pool company since they're the one that made that mistake. Cause I feel like we are, Lee County is not giving us a break. And the pool company needs to be held responsible for this. Um.
Does Lee County have any, uh, position on this relative to a break on sewer that doesn't go, water that doesn't go into a sewer?
They, I actually, they usually will find you for this, if I'm not mistaken, for pool, the overfills and overflows. Lee County also puts a cap on the sewer cost.
Say it again.
They cap their sewer cost, the gallons billed to a resident.
But we're in the unique situation of the true up and what goes in comes out and calculating and, you know.
Kelly, you have any feedback on this?
No.
No.
Bob?
Well, I'm sympathetic because I've done the same thing with Cityport Mars and I didn't get any relief, although I tried like hell. Uh, secondly, I do not believe we would ever want our people to go under private property and turn the water off. I'd like to see that bite this in the butt. That's.
Too many things go on inside the house.
That you're unaware of. You know, you might kill exotic fish or I, I don't know. So, uh, between a rock and a.
Again, if the, if the resident had, um, answered the phone and we had authorization to turn it off.
Yeah.
Numerous missed opportunities.
Ed, you have anything else to add?
No.
Okay. Do you want direction from us?
Yeah, we need direction from the board.
So you, the direction, I guess, to be to follow the, our current policy and then allow the resident a payment plan of three billing cycles. Is that one?
Is that your motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. All right. The next, um, item, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
So this is the, uh, again, talking about and trying to dive in to the full deployment project for the meter replacements, um, understanding that the lead time on brass is six to eight months, if not longer. Um, this purchase would start that clock. We are pursuing SRF funding. Um, if the funding is not available at the May request for inclusion, it'll be at the August request for inclusion, which again is well within be- before we even anticipate getting that brass. Uh, so ultimately, we're looking for your approval to place this order.
So we're using, uh, Lee County's system to order these materials, which would allow us to, uh,
Get the best.
Avoid going out to bids. This is deemed a, SRF goes along with that. They don't have any problem with that?
Yeah, and what, what we need to do is, the board can authorize preparation and execution by the chair of an agreement to piggyback to more formal document.
Or the Lee County.
Then Lee County contract. And so we, we replace the term Lee County with the district. And that the, and the key issue is for the record, that the prices and the materials are the same as in the contract. There, there's no variation. And then the extensions in the contract. So we, nothing gets changed. Uh, is that correct, Chelsea?
Yes.
But SRF doesn't have any issue with using that format.
They do not.
Okay.
We've, I've offered and, um, they've had, they've changed hands, but the, the gentleman that we're now dealing with has been with SRF for twenty plus years. Um, we've gone round and round with them with this. Um, and their key date is the date we receive the material and are invoiced. That is the key date. As long as that's beyond the, uh, priority date or the approval date from SRF, we're good.
And the provision that we buy America.
Yes.
Okay.
And it, and any, um, if we, working internally, if there are any components that we can't get that are by America, which we anticipate there to be some, a couple of small components, I would suggest that we direct purchase those.
So what do we need a motion to?
Motion with Tony. Well, I guess, Tony, can you just run that by me again about the timing? I didn't quite catch that.
So the, basically the, the clock starts ticking for when, uh, SRF will reimburse any expenses that are incurred after they approve the, the amount of the loan, uh, for the project. So if we put it in order now, it doesn't matter. It's whenever we actually receive the product and whatever date is on the invoice. That's the date that they look at when we submit for reimbursement. So if we place the order now and it gets approved in August and the stuff comes in in September, we're totally fine. They don't, they don't care when we order it. They care when we actually receive it and need to pay for it. When the cost is actually incurred. And we don't incur a cost to order. We only incur it once we receive it.
Okay.
Okay.
And we have that in writing from SRF.
So that, again, the agreement to piggyback would basically piggyback on this.
Yes.
And so I'll prepare that and that'd be part of the motion for, uh, the board authorize the manager and council repair the agreement to piggyback and authorize the chair to sign that.
And who would be the other party to sign that agreement?
It'd be, um, the, the company.
Ferguson.
If Ferguson, yes.
And just so we're clear, we did get an updated quote. I did ask, um, Austin to get, uh, from the vendor um, an updated quote saying that this is piggybacking Lee County's contract with the contract number. So, um, we did get that in writing from Ferguson as well.
The vendor being first. The vendor being first.
Yes, just to reiterate.
Yeah, yes, and the contract's just, yeah, I don't know if the entire contract with Lee County is in the packet. I think it might be because it's huge.
Yeah.
Because I asked for it to be in the record.
Just for clear, every Lee County contract that, RFP that they put out, they have a clause in there that allows for other governmental entities to piggyback and utilize the same pricing. So that's the clause that we're utilizing with Ferguson for those pri- that to get a better deal.
Sounds good.
Okay, so Tony, what is the motion?
Motion to approve, uh, piggybacking on the Lee County contract for the purchase of the materials outlined in the agenda item.
Eleven B.
Eleven B, and to authorize staff to prepare for the chair to sign an agreement to piggyback between the district and Ferguson.
That's what I want. That's my move.
And for piggyback.
I'll second that motion.
Do you have a motion in a second?
Tony, repeat. Aye.
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 Thank you. Alright, next, we have the Raftellis Utility Rate Stud- Study, and Tony is here to give the, your presentation and answer all your questions.
The other more distinguished Tony.
Yes.
The other Tony.
Tony two point.
Last time this Tony was here was about a year ago, so I was looking back, because it seemed that long.
Were all guns and tomatoes packed at the door?
So while the presentation's coming up, I believe in your packet, you have a schedule and also a technical report of something like this, so if you want to get into the weeds any. I will say that, um, we did a, a pretty in-depth report a few years ago. Rates were adopted. Um, if you go to the next slide. This one is, uh, is more of an update. We took the financial model, which is a five-year planning model, uh, focused on the capital improvement funding and, and, see where we, where you are today and moving forward. The key here is really, um, funding capital and some inflation in the out years is, is the, um, it is what's happening. So we, we just updated the model we had last time. So more of a streamlined project this time, and I'm gonna just take you through an overview. I'm gonna focus on that capital here. On slide three, um, what we did is took the, uh, five-year plan and we broke it down into two parts, just to sort of guide the decision-making and when things are happening as far as when the capital is scheduled, and we put, um, what's funded in this fiscal year, next fiscal year, and then what would be funded through fiscal year twenty-six through twenty-eight in the out year. So as you can see, out of twenty-nine million dollars, uh, all but three million is, is in the next couple of years, at least, as far as committing the funding, some of the projects may take a little longer to actually get done, but as you were talking about bidding projects and so forth, you know, it, you need the funds in hand and be ready, um, to, to fund any projects, even though, like the meter replacement program, which is the most significant project, is gonna, continue beyond fiscal year twenty-five, but, and I'll cut to the chase a little bit. The rates we're recommending for the water and irrigation system are, are funding these projects. Make sure you have that funding in place. Um, that's why the rates are a little bit front-loaded, and we're also using reserves, as I'll show you in a chart. There was, do you, we're using reserves, um, but they're gonna bounce back, um, to balance the, the costly projects with, uh, keeping the rate increases from being any higher, as well. So it is a little bit front-loaded, but the, um, the rates will fund these projects here, and we have a, uh, uh, um, sustainable rate plan beyond that as well, which is more focused on inflation. Uh, on the next slide, just to show where that funding comes from, is, um, and this is the total over that, uh, that five-year period. The first line, water sewer revenue fund, is that's reserves and pay-as-you-go revenue. So that's, uh, folks pay their water bill, you're, they're putting money back into the system to fund these projects. So part of that three point one million is, is coming from pay-as-you-go. Some of it is pay, pay-as-you-go, that's in the form of reserves right now that you're gonna buy down. Same with the renewal and replacement fund. Um, that fund has money going into it from payers, and it gets spent down as well over time and built back up. You also see grants. Um, the other item I'll mention to you, uh, before getting to the debt is connection fees. That's new growth, of one point five million. So that's growth paying its own way on the growth-related projects. If the growth is higher than this or quicker, you might have a little bit more, um, to fund from connection fees. Again, this is, uh, the projections over the next five years. And then in order to fund these projects, um, we have two SRF loans, and I think you were asked in the January meeting, I, I heard that the board is, is looking towards the SRF loan, which is a low-interest loan. The, the amount of funding of the capital is fi- uh, just under fifteen point eight million dollars. The total loan will be a little bit higher because there's capitalized interest and, and such. This is the funding of the projects, of the project costs.
And Tony, real quick, I just want to mention, so this has been going on in the background. You'll notice that the number here and in the facilities plan later, it's different. Again, they were operating at different speeds, so we just finalized the number with the facilities plan. It's a little bit higher than what we had in here. Um, so, but before we do any final adjustments, or if we approve this, we'll make sure that that number gets updated accordingly.
What, what's the actual amount of the reserve being used, dollar-wise?
Of, of utility reserves?
Yeah. How much, how much, how much you, uh, are reserves have you got contemplated being used in, uh, in this picture here?
I will answer that in a couple of charts. Uh, um, graphically, I'll get the actual, the, the numbers themselves. I'll point to you is.
Because I didn't, I, I may have missed it, but I didn't see anything that referenced reserve in there.
Yeah.
Dollar value.
Of reserves. Well, if you, if, um, if I can go to that, and then, and then I'll clarify if it's not clear.
Okay, then the other question is, on connection fees, how many EDUs does one million five oh two make up? What did you use for that? Five hundred thousand, fifteen hundred?
EDUs? No, not five hundred thousand.
No, 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 five hundred or a thousand.
Oh, yeah, I believe it's five hundred. I can check on that number as well.
The reason I ask is one of the things, uh, we should have these people that are coming in at this five hundred or a thousand, whatever the number is. Let's bump that connection fee up. This is ridiculous.
Increasing.
Increasing, yes, big time. That's, that's ridiculous.
Yeah. We did increase it last time, you know, of course, now you have more costs as well, so you could look at that again for sure. Okay, um, and I'll get to the reserve question, uh, here in just a minute. Um, and then I can point you into the actual schedule here. I have it more in a graphical form. So you have the twenty-twenty-four SRF, and then there's a, uh, smaller one in twenty-twenty-seven, um, of just under a million dollars. So that's the funding over the five-year period. And it just as a reference, and if, um, there's a schedule in the back of here, exhibit twelve has all the details of every, every project and how it's funded by year and so forth, so. And I believe the schedule right after that has the reserves, so, uh, I'll get to that in a minute. Next slide, please. Alright, so here's a summary of the model, um, broken out. We, we run a utility fund, but we do have separate, uh, potable water rates, irrigation rates, and sewer rates. And graphically, this is the, um, uh, the update of the model, and, um, there's, there's no, because of, mention the easy one first. Because of sewer, we had rate increases last time we did this, was rate increases have been implemented. And, um, in the bottom left, that sewer, the solid line going across is your revenue at existing rates. Um, you see it going up just a little bit because of growth, but there's no rate increase in sewer in this. So, um, in the overall utility bill, we're proposing increases. It doesn't include sewer. And you can see that we're, we're covering our costs through twenty-twenty-eight, um, in there, but looking right above there in water, we're not, because we have additional debt, and those vertical bars, they go up primarily because of the additional debt. Um, there is some pay-as-you-go capital, and there's some inflation there as well. So, we looked at phasing this in. We're phasing in over two years. We'd like to phase it in over more years, but we'd have to really draw our reserves down a lot. And again, I'll get to that in just a minute. And, uh, the same with irrigation as well. We have additional debt, and there we're, we're phasing that in, um, over a couple of years as well, and I'll show what the effects of this is in just a minute, but on the bottom right-hand corner is the rate plan. And you can see, a- as I mentioned before, funding those projects this year and next with the water and irrigation rate increases, so that you can secure the debt, that low-cost debt. And then there, after that, it's just inflationary increases on the water and irrigation, and as I said right now, um, for sewer, it would stay the same. And in a minute, I will show what this means as far as dollars go. The next slide, I'll show how this compares to others nearby. At a benchmark four thousand gallons, we showed something similar last time. So this is a four thousand gallon bill. It's shown per month, just to, um, uh, keep it on a, on a per-month basis here. Um, and you can see you're in the middle of these, these other utilities, um, in October, the beginning of fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, was the first of those increases, going from eighty-three, uh, fifty-three, eighty-three dollars fifty-three cents to eighty-nine, ten. It's about a six point seven percent increase by the time you have the sewer factor in there as well.
Question?
Yes.
Lee County is on our water, has, uh, given us notice that we're gonna have an eight percent increase every year.
Yep.
In years twenty-seven and twenty-eight, we're having a three percent. Are you saying that their eight percent is equal to three percent of our total?
I'm saying that we, we.
Or did you subsidize some of this?
Yeah, well, it's built, it's built in to, you know, that eight percent is a portion of your cost, so your whole cost structure is eight. So it's, it's in the rate path, factors in those rate increases in there. So if they continue eight percent beyond this period, you're gonna need to do more, for sure, but we have the eight percents factored in.
It'll be, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, i- in the future, is that sustainable? If they keep on doing eight, can you still do three? Not in the long run. Yeah, not in the long run.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and, and so in the future, this is a static increase, except for Lee County. Over to the left, you see the Lee County rates in July going up from seventy-five to eighty-one dollars. And they're gonna continue going up as well, a- as some of these others are as well. So the, the other thing I want to identify is where the eighty-three dollar goes to eighty-nine dollars, uh, later this year, the beginning of fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Where does that go in the future? And if all these others stayed the same, you would really just leap over Cape Coral. I doubt they're gonna stay the same through this period of time, I really don't know where they're going. Where we have your rate plan is on the next slide. Is, um, and you see the broken-down water and sewer total bill, and there's the, uh, eighty-three to the eighty-nine dollars, and then the year after, so a year and a half from now, it would go to ninety-five. That's the other no, other big jump. And then it's, um, the three percent water, there's nothing on the sewer, so it goes from ninety-five to ninety-seven to ninety-eight sixty-five. And that's, we, where we see absent, who knows what happens between now and then? Who knows what happens with Lee County? But that's where your bill would be by twenty-twenty-eight. So there's some certainty in the bill, um, at least that, for that period of time, and to fund those projects, uh, as well. Since the last study, uh, and one of the things we, key things we looked at is the cash flow, but also reserves as well. And you asked the question about, um, the reserve balances. Um, so this chart starts with, um, the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, so back up four months, and your reserve levels are pretty good. They're about three million dollars, including your, um, renewal replacement program and your, your operating reserves. And we have a minimal target of the six months of, of O and M, and you're over that target, but by the end of this year, going into next year, we're spinning that down. So to answer your question, you're going from three million down to about a million dollars. So about two million dollars of reserves you're using to phase in these rates, to fund capital. And, and we looked at different scenarios of borrowing more, borrowing less, and it's really a balance of trying not to borrow too much, uh, to hurt our cash flow, but to keep, um, a good balance. That balance does rebound by twenty-twenty-eight. You're back to about where you started from. So, and one of the reasons of having a reserve is to be able to use it to phase in, to fund capital. You know, we didn't want to show this because we, we, we wanted to disclose that we are using the reserves, but we have a plan to replenish them. That's part of their, their rate funding plan.
And as you all recall, we had two roundabouts in the last couple of years that, uh, especially this Griffin one, we know took a big chunk out of the reserves out of the utilities.
Uh, exhibit seventeen has the details on those, that reserve numbers, if you want to look at those details. Alright, and so in conclusion, um, we have, uh, rate adjustments in each October through twenty-twenty-seven, those phases that I, I showed before. They're designed to fund twenty-nine million dollars in capital projects over that period. The rates this upcoming year are, it's favorable. They're in the average compared to others, so there's nothing gonna jump out. You know, I know, um, you want to minimize rate increases, but it's gonna stay about the same as others as well. And you should consider reviewing the rate structure inadequacy every few years, anything unforeseen. So by the end of this twenty-seven, twenty-eight period, review this again unless something else comes up. And the other thing that we've worked with, uh, Chelsea and staff is, is customer notification. Make sure that, um, they have on their utility bill that date time and place of the public hearing when these rates are, would be adopted.
We may want to consider looking at this not in four years, but in two years.
Well, I, yeah, I think that's kind of, you said what, you were here three years ago or so, so we're kind of in that realm, um, depending on what projects come up.
Much stuff moving around right now.
So, and does anybody have any questions for Tony?
Very easy to read.
No, yeah, good job.
Very easy to read.
So ultimately, next steps with this would be, um, looking for any feedback or consent, or if you guys are good with this. Um, again, the one caveat that we have to make sure that the meter project number is, um, updated, and then we would bring this back with public notice hearing, all Tony's fun legalese.
Public hearing notice, and as Tony mentioned, as to the billing. We've done that before, but it's so much fun.
So when, when would that public hearing be then?
Uh, me?
It's the next utility bill.
What?
Well, we, we want to make sure that we time it right, so we'd have to back into those dates with regards to making it effective the October first. So, ultimately, I wanted to go and get your feedback on this first. We can work with staff on backing into that date, um, and making sure that we hit all of our marks with.
I'm thinking of the budget, uh, and how's, how's this gonna tie in with a public hearing for the budget? One, one of, one of these is bad enough, but have two of them with these numbers.
Seven, we got seven months. So the budget's in off.
If it's your, to your point, I think if, if it's your intent to do this sooner than later.
Yes.
We can make that happen.
Yeah.
And that's what I would do.
March fifteenth is next billing cycle. Next bill's going, after that, it'll be. So it'll be May after that, then. So, uh, always I ask that because as Tony mentioned, this report, when there's two hearing notice.
What's the lead time?
One is has to be the billing, and one has to be in the paper.
What's the lead time before the billing?
It doesn't really say. The statute doesn't say. Oh, I mean, the lead time to hear the.
Yeah, what's the lead time on, um, what you just asked?
The bill's the lead bid for, what do you have to have this approved, be able to enact it into a two-month billing cycle?
Uh, it has to be posted, um, and released to the public thirty days before it can become effective.
Most of your needs.
April.
For your, per, notice to the customers and your billing cycle?
Propose.
You, how early in advance you need, thirty, thirty days?
At least thirty.
So the early, the, the, the public hearing could be early April and allow us to initiate this at the May meeting or at the May billing?
It has to be, the notice has to be in the bill.
That's what I was gonna ask.
It has to be in the March bill.
Number fifteen.
Right. How long did it take last time to repair the notice to go in the billing?
It didn't take long at all.
Okay, once you find life.
I have to give the notice to the printer, um, by March first.
Okay, so we've got to, we've got enough time.
Yeah, but we're even more.
So, so that's doable.
Tony, did you have?
It's doable.
To add?
Correct. You would in the March notice and public hearing, I assume.
There was a question, uh, the, the lead, there's lead time, but Leslie's talking about, but also, as, and I'm not gonna play lawyer, but the statute's very simple to the point, is the date time and place of the public hearing. So as long as the bills are sent out before.
Correct.
Your, your public hearing.
Well, again, there's two notice requirements. One is to go in utility billing, and there's no set timeframe beforehand, other than to be in utility billing with the date time and place. Then there's another one in one ninety for fees, rentals, and charges, and that notice requirement is ten days beforehand. So it's a short timeframe.
So we get it into March bill, that we could do it anytime.
You can do it in April.
So if that's the direction, we can make that happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I would do.
And making sure we're in compliance with Florida statute.
Yeah, so the, well, the key issue was, uh.
The recommendation would be a public hearing in April, date to be determined by attorney, so that that date can go into the March.
Billing.
Billing.
But, but I guess the question is, the, the, the rates that we're talking about, Tony, you indicated there might be some adjustments to the rates, as opposed to what?
Yes. We have to update one of the numbers.
I think it, but would be more appropriate for the board to see that proposed rates before it was advertised for the public hearing. I mean, that, that looks quite uncapable.
To June.
Yeah.
But if it's not effective until October, there's plenty of time.
That's still good.
Could we put it out with a not-to-exceed amount? To put in the notice, the higher amount, although it may be reduced.
Well, just to, like, get everybody, you know, out there with that, because they'll just see that as, even though we'll say that that's the higher amount, they, they're gonna see that's the amount. I'm just. So.
That's what we.
We just missed that little part of the sentence bomb.
Is there a bunch of a difference in the two?
Let us go back. Let us.
Let's don't rush it.
We'll come, we'll come to you at your next meeting with the plan in place for implementing sooner than later.
Timeline.
And making sure compliant and setting dates, hard dates, and then that way in getting the numbers updated.
Because you have, you got about two million correction in this.
Yeah.
That we know of.
Yes.
So in other words, at the March seventh meeting, it might be possible to have what is recommended by staff and, and Tony. So notice at the March seventh meeting, it might be possible to have what is recommended by staff and, and Tony and Ray consultant. And that will give Leslie enough time to, once we agree upon the format and we have all that ready at the March seventh, to get it to the printer.
Yeah, there's no, there's no point in solutioning now. The, the intent, the direction of the board is to have this prepared and ready for October. Staff needs to back into that day, period.
We will, we will bring you a plan at your next meeting.
Yeah, and the sooner side, it's, it's point, so it does conflict with the, to not have the worm.
Hi, thank you, Tony. So we already had D. You didn't have E?
Go to D.
Pretty.
Yes, we did. We did D.
So, uh, Randy had been working on back and forth with the, the one vendor for, um, refreshing the monuments. Um, here in Gateway, kind of hit a roadblock with them, um, wasn't loving what they were throwing around. So, um, we found some, I think it was in the last monthly report, uh, some other ideas or options. Different vendor, found a different vendor, yep. Uh, so this proposal is from that different vendor. They've, um, done other, uh, monuments designed, um, the deliveral, deliverables here would be for programming, schematic design, design development and construction documentation for permitting. Uh, ultimately, we're looking for your approval, um, based on the existing count of monuments that we have.
And what? Go ahead.
Ballpark. What's one monument like the one in this picture, the bottom, uh, pull those pictures up, the one that says Gateway.
Well, first, what, what is, what is scope? But before we jump into, I think you're looking at price and.
Yeah, we'll find out what this costs.
So I, I think, I think we need to first. Talk about what is prior, what is scope and what is priority? Where do we? If, so we need, um, we need a monument at the, uh, at the Commons Park for the administrative building.
We got four entrances.
Well, well, I'm, I'm saying from a priority perspective, we have to put a monument where there's, where there's not gonna be one, where there was not one today. So Commons Park, that's a priority. Right? And then it's the other entrances to Gateway, the entrances. And then it's any other monument that's pre-existing.
Well, you got two entrances with nothing right now.
Yep.
Two entrances with nothing and three with something.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just trying to get the priority, you know, because we'll be funding these. I don't know if we're gonna fund them all together or if we're gonna phase them. But then we also have monuments in, uh, in other parts of Gateway. I don't know if we're.
Two, we have two, we have the one here in front, the Town Lake Center, those are not really ours.
Yeah, we only have five. It's ours.
So the one by the charter school, then the one on Daniel's and Gila Boulevard. Then the one over here at the front, the pool has one, which I would have saved, like remove the pool, because you're gonna have to come, you know? The Danny, the one at Stony Brook and then the two over here by the, the school and the other. I mean, me, the one by the charter school, the, the, like, you don't really see that one. Like, I would like for us to focus on the main entrances, because like, I, even today, I went by, it's like underneath the oak tree, like bush in there, every, it, it, it's.
The one by JetBlue?
Yeah, the one by JetBlue. It's like really in a location that, you know, the lighting is not working. I just think.
It made sense when it was a cow pasture.
Yeah, I think it's.
And it's really not even interest that we've, would want to advertise as a, you know, we've.
Remove that one, like we have removed plenty of it before.
Well, if I knew, if I had an idea of what it costs, I could have a decision as to just how far you go with this. But these kind of monuments are expensive as hell, very expensive.
It, it all goes back into design. Do you want single face, double face? Do you want it illuminated? Do you want a water feature with it? I mean, those are all the options. Um, and if, if you say simple, you know, simple, keep it simple, stupid, right?
What's, what do, what do we have budgeted right now? Anything?
And we do have money in the bonds. We'll have to, I'll have to pull that up. We do, we do have financing available as part of the bonds for this, which was decided last year. So we're trying to get that ball rolling since we have three years to do these projects.
I, I would like, if anything, I would like to eliminate three right now.
Say again.
I would like to eliminate three of the ones we have now and then, because I know the cost of this is gonna be.
Focus on the.
Yeah.
Bigger ones.
So.
To Doug's point.
The three that we have.
Just, I would, we're, we're in the process of, uh, repainting them now, so.
So the two at both ends of Gateway?
I'll keep those.
Keep those.
Yes.
So, so if you're gonna add three, what are the three that you're going to add? Oh, you wanna remove those three, okay.
One by JetBlue, the one in front of this office here, the one by the pool, that's currently at the pool, we have one there.
You don't want the Sherman soccer one?
Oh, no, no, we'll keep that one, sorry, the one at the pool, because it's gonna be.
The one in the median.
Yes, the center median, that one.
Well, the one at the pool is going to be, I would think, a combination.
That'll be, that will be a new one. That will be net new. And then let's just, what do you, like, for the entrance off eighty two, what do we? Man, I don't think you do anything there. I mean, if, if anything, you might do some update it, but.
Get an update on that as well, on, on the ship. Yes, on that.
It's not one of the two that you're talking about, it's being at the entrances, where that is.
So, are you talking, let's, let's go.
I'm trying to take notes.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the Sherman.
Two, I, Daniel's and Gateway Boulevard.
Okay.
Two, Griffin in eighty two. One at eighty two and Gateway Boulevard. But the one at eighty two and Gateway Boulevard, we have a question on.
That's the Stony Brook.
One, yeah.
Deal, yeah.
Oh, really?
Okay, how many did you just count off?
Two, four, six.
About seven, okay.
Focus one is a question.
Studying the scope question.
But you're recommend, you're recommending not doing all those.
If you do something of this nature right here and that look, you're looking at a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, I mean.
You're not gonna get attention.
Thing is, like, you, you, you don't have the space, you don't have the space on Griffin eighty two to do this. One, it's on our property, one is not.
This, this was just.
This is just for the.
No, these are just conceptual ideas, so you could kind of get the flavor.
I mean, to be honest, I kind of like the ones we saw before. I thought.
Yeah, I don't like.
I don't like any of this, to be honest. I prefer the one that we had before. I thought it was much simple, easy on the eyes.
Like, I don't mind that, I don't mind this.
Yes, yeah, I don't mind this neither.
This, this structure.
Too much.
I don't like the.
Who did the one before? Was it the same firm?
Uh, Lee Designs did the one before. This is a different firm.
So like, these aren't bad, but whatever the, the mockup they have with the.
That would, I didn't.
Yeah.
I thought it was too much as well.
So again, this, we're just looking for design services.
To me, it's something that is very easy, kind of reminds me of Hampton, reminds me of Stony Brook, reminds me of something that you already see in the community.
No, no, the middle one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the middle one.
No, no, no.
I like the, I like the three seventy seven and three seventy eight.
Seventy eight, yes.
What I'm accustomed to in this business is these guys, before they jump in and, because these, the planning costs and design or preliminary costs can, can be substantial. I'd much rather have them and make an investment in us and come in and show us what you think for our community so that we get a flavor of whether we want to go any further with your design firm. Because if they're gonna come out and show us stuff that we don't like, my deal is we get a different design firm.
So what, what?
Let, let, in other words, let them on their nickel, make a presentation to us.
They were just difficult to work with.
Part of it, yes, and, and, uh, they, they were at the point where they wanted money invested, um, and.
We're not ready for that.
With kind of everything up in the air and we're trying to get this project rolling, at least through a design, so that way they can bring some, some concepts back to you, um, and get the ball rolling on these projects.
Yeah, I don't want to go to design on anything until I can see what kind of a provision they have.
Seventy eight looks expensive to me. You got Burgala, you got that back bowl, that's not cheap.
Well, I think, I think, I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse, um, here, because we've been talking about reevaluating our, our, um, our brand for Gateway as a whole. So, I mean, we need to come up with, um, a, a brand concept, style guides, and then you apply that to your buildings, to your monuments, to your look and feel of your signs, all those. This is basically, you're building a site, you're putting a monument together where you think is nice, but then how does it apply to other aspects of Gateway? When we're looking at building this administrative building, the, you know, potentially maybe, uh, a, a, a park. Um, colors of this building and the parks, I mean, to me, there's a much bigger conceptualization that needs to take place before we necessarily get.
So you want us to look at finding, um, professional branding company?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know if.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest with you. I don't know what that animal is. And I don't know why it's on.
Griffin, that's Gateway.
Is it Griffin Boulevard?
You know, that's how the cures came up with it way back when we started. If, if, if you wanted to have a distinct logo or trademark with Griffin, and I forget, I knew it was part wine, but first part is also like an eagle.
See if this firms, if they also do. Yeah, it doesn't have to be anything crazy. It's just like, here's your, what, what colors do you want to incorporate? Do you want to, you know, do you want to incorporate this existing logo? What is the font that you're using? Are you brick? Are you stone? Are you wood? Are you, what, what is, you know, that's something that we can help. We don't need a big firm to come in and spend sixty thousand dollars to tell us, we're gonna use a Griffin and green and use that font. Yeah.
Repose gray.
And then so that's step one, and then step two is prioritizing which ones we wanted to do first. And I think the commons will be first.
It has.
And then, and then the, the three main entrances.
Okay. Well, we painted the existing ones. We're working on wrapping that project up and, um, we'll take a step back and start to look at.
Yeah.
A, a brand. And then bring that back. If that's the board direction.
Cause that will also need to be incorporated in the colors that we use for the administrative building and, uh, and everything else, you know, so it should be consistent.
Yeah. All right.
You know, just from my own knowledge, why was this place called Gateway?
Builder.
Builder. The builder? It was a gateway.
I'll bet the time and the, the whole idea about it was gateway to this area because. New airport is coming. I'm sure that's just a part of the rationale.
Okay.
And we will work on putting together a prioritization list from a staff perspective and bring that back to you.
And I think what we should do as a board is just, if there's certain elements that you like.
Tell us, please.
Just get that back to, to Chelsea. Are there certain, you know? Do, do we like green? Do you want to stay with yellow, other grays? Do you like?
Well, the basics is right now, so are you gonna, you're gonna go with stone or are you gonna go with concrete? Cause we have stone at Stony Brook, and if you're gonna keep that one, I would think you'd want to try to tie somewhat of that look into the rest of the community. Now, if you're gonna get rid of that, then everything's open, because everything else is a hodgepodge right now. We don't have anything that's consistent at all. It's, it's just a hodgepodge. So I think the first thing you want to eliminate is are you, we gonna take and try to keep a stone look? Or are we going to drop that and go to something totally different? That's stone, there's one at the bottom that says Gateway, that.
Yeah, so that's something like pine wood. Pine wood has a very, very small, like, it doesn't have to be a lot, just in the bottom of a small thing. Just do that.
Like that right there with us.
Very similar, yeah.
So you, you still get that feeling.
Be elegant and simple at the same time.
Yeah.
You know, but we just need to understand who, who we are.
Okay. Red bull's kicking in.
With flashing lights.
Okay. All right, well, we will come back to you all. Step back.
Okay, public hearing.
After four, so we're good. Tony, you wanna do your spiel?
Let me go to it ahead.
Are we on district attorney?
Ahead.
No, we have the public hearing, the notice and.
This is an item that's required for the SRF facilities plan for clean water, uh, the state revolving fund and.
Mic on?
Oops, I'm sorry, yeah, it's, it's on. And so the board has to, uh, adopt the facilities plan for the meter system replacement and conduct a public hearing. And the advertisement had to be in the paper fifteen days in advance of the public hearing. So you notice part of the materials is the affidavit of publication of the notice from today's hearing that was in uh, the Fort Myers News Press on January thirty first, twenty twenty four. And we have a draft facilities plan, uh, for the board to consider, for the public to, uh, register to speak once you open the public hearing. Uh, so I would suggest that, uh, make a motion to open the public hearing for the adoption of the facilities plan for master system replacement, to consider the proposed draft facilities plan. And then consider adoption of twenty twenty four dash oh eight after conclusion of the public hearing.
It's good, Tony, thank you.
Yep, so it'd be a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move to open the public hearing.
All right, so, um, we do have some representatives from Arcadis on the line. Um, I will, I don't, Jeannie, are you on?
Yeah, madam chair, after we have a presentation and some board conversation, uh, so it's a public meeting, public, uh, comments, yes.
So, um, we'll just turn it over, we'll do a brief overview of what the facilities plan is and kind of how we got to where we are and where we're going. Um, and then if you have any questions.
And then open to the public.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, if you want to go ahead.
Sure, sure. So we.
Sure, sure. So we have put tickets.
Back up, I'm Jeannie Kruger with Arcadis. Uh, thank you for having me today.
Thank you.
We put together the project plan for SRF funding for Gateway, uh, for your meter program. And really, the intent of the, uh, project plan is to establish for the SRF, for DEP, um, who you are, what your community has as far as assets and where you are located, all of those good things. We include maps and lots of fun thing. Um, we have, uh, what are you doing? What's the project entail? And, um, what are you, when are you going to do it? And then what are your alternatives? You know, giving a good look at what are the environmental impacts? Um, obviously, we put in, which is evidenced right here today, the public participation portion, which is very standard for SRF. Uh, they do require a bit of financial information to ensure that your debt service will allow, um, for, for these types of things. And then again, we, uh, we go ahead and get authorization and to enable you to move forward and actually get the loan executed. So that's really in a nutshell what we've accomplished here. We do have a draft facilities plan ready. Uh, ready to go once we finalize this and get the, things going. And, um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
All right, and just to dovetail on that, um, you all may recall a couple meetings ago, you gave the direction to staff um, and working with Arcadis on pursuing SRF funding instead of the bond financing for this meter replacement project. Um, we are self-funding the pilot portion of it, but for the full deployment, um, we are seeking those low interest, uh, loans from SRF. As a requirement, uh, they, this facilities plan and public hearing, public notice, uh, we're checking all those boxes. This was a very fast turnaround for this facilities plan, so I have to, um, give kudos when kudos are due to Arcadis. They were very responsive, you know, quick, quick turnaround if they needed stuff and, and same with staff. Staff was excellent at getting information and we were putting this together. Um, I feel that this, uh, facilities plan is, uh, comprehensive and will meet all of the requirements um, of the SRF, uh, application process. We're still working, uh, hand in hand with our SRF contacts on making sure, um, things go smoothly. Hopefully for the May request for inclusion meeting, um, and if not, that would be forwarded on, um, and continued to the August request for inclusion meeting. So, uh, with that, I'll pause and, uh, please let us know if you have any questions.
Yeah, uh, I thought, I thought it was well written, uh, Tony's, uh, red lines, uh, I don't know if everybody saw, had opportunity to see the red line. I, I thought. Yeah, I, I thought Tony's red lines were, uh, were very well, well, well done. Uh, under section one point two, existing system, the only thing I saw there that I thought was somewhat incomplete is we discuss the wastewater collection system and the, uh, uh, potable system. But we don't give any facts or figures about the irrigation system. So I, I think there should be some wording, maybe a sentence, sentence, sentence and a half that would describe our irrigation system as to what it is. Other than that, um, I just didn't have anything. It looked, was very well done. Uh, or staff, question for staff, and I asked Chelsea outside earlier. I want to make sure, because some of these numbers are weird relative to the number of meters. And it's because of the fact that, uh, I think there's forty eight, seventy eight, or some oddball number like that of meters. But in reality, we know we have. But in reality, we know we have about five thousand users. Well, the reason why the irrigation are less is because we have master meter communities. So when you take like, uh, uh, the communities that are the large, uh, what do you call them? A condo type deals that have master meters, Royal Green, good example. That's instead of maybe two meter or instead of having four hundred meters, like you do if it was a single family home, there's only two. My question is, are we categorically sure that we have the, the correct number of residential meters on this, both potable and irrigation? That's critical.
I'm confident we do, but we will double check the numbers, um, prior to this being in final form.
Other than that, if the meters are correct, uh, all the other numbers looked, uh, looked real good. I'm very pleased with it.
Madam Chair, I may, uh, Chelsea, just for the record, this, uh, the version that's in the meeting book was posted to the district website and available to the public.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the public and on the website is the red line, black, red line, black.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, good.
And just. Yeah.
Revised.
Uh, but we posted the agenda last, uh, packet last Thursday, um, or Friday, maybe. Had some comments from, uh, the attorney, because again, this was a tight turnaround. Uh, Tony provided his feedback and comments. We incorporated those and, and got those, uh, published. So what is, what, what you see is, uh, incorporating the attorney's comments.
Second draft.
Yeah.
Will we be getting that one online somehow?
Tony's comments?
Yes.
That they're, they're incorporated into this version.
He was wondering what they.
I'm not getting, I didn't get it by electronically.
Okay, we can get you Tony's, uh, red boxed version of.
You want a hard copy?
He always.
Yes, it's down to.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
Trying to say.
Okay, so, uh, no, we, any other comments? So we'll go ahead and open the public comments online or attendance.
I have no one online. No one, no one signed up.
Have you received any faxes or emails, text or other transmittals?
No.
Or comments?
Nope.
Thank you.
Only you, Tom.
I've learned, I'm wanting to use Adobe Pro better.
Okay, good. Did we just close the hearing?
Yeah. So it would be a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
On the favor?
Aye.
Now an opportunity for the board to discuss and take action. And the action that's requested by the, by the staff is for the board to adopt the, uh, resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh eight that, um, adopts the facilities plan for clean water state revolving fund dated as of two six. As two fifteen, right? It says two sixteen in here.
Is, is that resolution in here, Tony?
Yes.
Yes, it's, uh, page three ninety.
I'm looking at it on my book.
But just as a data, we need to correct that data as of February twenty twenty fourth. I think it's a two sixteen twenty four in the book.
Oh, okay.
Make that correction and, and the one, two, three, four, five, six, whereas that dated as of February twenty twenty four. That was presented to the board at a duly and properly noticed public hearing on February fifteenth. And the hearing was published on, in the Fort Myers News Press. They'll make another correction. That's a scribbler's error in the last, whereas it's February fifteenth is a twenty twenty four hearing date. And so we asked the resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh eight with the scribblers error correction that I noted, uh, changing the date to as of February twenty twenty four and correct that in two spots.
I will move on resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight with the scribblers corrections. The facilities plan for clean water state revolving fund.
It's in the agenda stack.
That's in the agenda pack.
I'll second that.
Motion, thank you, Najeev.
Aye. Thank you.
Anything else with that?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Ready for monthly report?
Yeah.
Start with admin for.
Any questions?
For the admin.
For the admin part. Well, was it the Lee County Sheriff's Office report? It's under admin. So my only comment was regarding the report from, uh, uh, Dogwoods. And I kind of talked to Chelsea about it. The amount, we gave direction for when we were hiring the detail to enforce. And, and, you know, admin should, and we mentioned about a lot of warnings. Well, I was saddened to say that there were over forty warnings, verbal warnings given and no enforcement made for that particular day with that particular officer.
I know there's forty, forty warnings, but no tickets.
Not even a written warning, a verbal warning. And so.
Verbal warnings, but no tickets.
Yeah. So.
So we again, again, we, we can request and will request again that they enforce and, um, but it's as the officer sees fit. But we will again reiterate that the intent of the district paying for these enforcement and details is for them to do as such, enforce.
Please note too, that this is not the traffic patrol. This is just at the school. So this, the heat is a little different. This is the high school traffic.
Yeah.
No, that's not the officers that sit on Gateway and Griffin.
That's, that's the only one that I have a.
Yeah.
Issue. Everything else is fine.
This is them making sure people aren't parking on the side of the roads and queuing too early and things like that. That's what this particular one was.
Yes. Which did nothing. To me.
Well, I will follow up with the captains.
And I think this was from January ninth, which was prior to that direction.
That's, that's all I have for, for admin. Anybody else have anything?
Staff update. I know there was something in here, but.
Yeah. Um, what, so Scott Holt's, our landscape lead tomorrow is his last day with the district. He will be going to, uh, landscaping company. So we are actively recruiting and trying to hire, um, backfill his position in the interim, um, staff between Daniel, um, and myself. Then, um, we'll be tackling those responsibilities and duties. We did have one pretty solid interview earlier this week for that position. Um, we're evaluating that.
Yep. I made an offer and haven't accepted offer for the Pelican, uh, maintenance person, um, awaiting the screening results. And so as soon as we have that, hopefully have someone.
Yep.
Background.
Yep.
And, um, with the project manager position, again, we're actively interviewing and recruiting that utilities has one additional operator, um, that they're, hiring for, uh, and that's, we've got a couple, uh, like in the inspector position, which used to be the intern position. Those aren't as high priority as per se, uh, the maintenance positions and the operators and project manager. So.
It, um, maybe at some point in the next couple of meetings, I'd, I'd love to get an input on some of the net new positions that we created last year to see where we're at on the value of those positions, like the contracts person. Just to be able to show you value, if they've, you know, managed or been a part of fifteen contracts as part of that. We've been able to X or, I mean, it could just be, you know, they've done their job. They've facilitated contracts. But if there's anything that we can add as far as, you know, putting us in a better position because we've got oversight, I think that was part of the, the value was oversight. So we have accountability. So just any update on any net new positions that we created last year, just an update on that.
Okay, um, we can do that. And then one of the things in talking with, um, Flavia, and I think, Doug, you may have mentioned this in past meetings, um, and I know Daniel and I have had some conversations about, um, from a staff perspective, you know, evaluating job descriptions, evaluating, um, and making career paths. And we're, Laura's been working on our, um, employee handbook. So from an HR perspective, um, we're slowly picking away, but, uh, I know Doug, when it, when the time is right, if, uh, I could use your expertise in that field perhaps in helping, uh, draft career paths. I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, sure. Oh, and one quick thing. I know that you and I, and I just want to bring it up so the, the board is aware. You and I had a conversation around all these things that we're doing, whether it's just infra, uh, infrastructure enhancement, um, to administrative building to whatever. I talked to Chelsea about maybe we're having Randy work on, uh, something to tie that to, like a much larger initiative. You know, gateway beautification or gateway for tomorrow or gateway, um, you know, community of choice, whatever that is. So when we are making improvements to, um, lift stations or to the roads or landscaping or enhancing amenities, it's tied to something that's bigger, right? It's enhancing, you know, gateway, maintaining as a community of choice, um, which benefits the people who live here, quality of life. You know, your property values, all these things. I think if we had something that we could tie it into, I think it would help when we're doing things and not just saying, hey, we have this much larger initiative to, to maintain a community of choice, but some signage, some.
Branding.
PR branding, marketing, so which ties back into a much larger thing. So I asked Chelsea to have Randy's to start to kick the tires on that. I mean, I don't think there's any cost to it, you know, maybe at least upfront. But I think it's important. Uh, so when we do something, people know this is part of something larger, you know?
Uh, one other, I'm jumping topics real quick, but still under the administrative portion. Uh, one of the conversations, one of the things that came out of the conversation with, um, the PrAC committee and reviewing of the fun park and moving the dog park to the fun park, um, was, uh, PrAC had previously contemplated, you know, what, what if they recommended the sale of the fun park? Because of, you know, not in my backyard or, you know, what added value does that bring? Um, I did get, uh, two prices for, from appraisers i- in the event that the board wished to, um, have that done. So one of the, the low cost was seven hundred and fifty dollars from a commercial appraiser, if, uh, that's something that you all would like to pursue.
So we're going back to the original practice, because originally that's what they wanted it.
They're going to discuss it at their next meeting in March, or in early March, um, because there, there was a lot of, um, feedback, constructive feedback, um, with regards to, uh, negative.
Okay. So do you want direction from us for us to go ahead and try to get that land appraised? So then PrAC can make it as a recommendation to the board.
Yeah.
In regard how to utilize the land.
Yeah. If, if that is the direction that if, if that is something you're contemplating on selling, I would say it would be prudent of us to, uh, get that property appraised.
The monies will be tied to subsidize.
Could be if that's how the board so chose to, to utilize those funds to offset phase one, um, funds. Because again, that was another comment that was made was, uh, increasing the tax bait, tax, the non-addictive law tax for the park amenities. So that is one way to help offset those.
I have no idea what the cost of that property will, will be. And I, and any of us will know unless we pay the seven hundred and fifty dollars to find out.
I, I don't know who would buy it. Uh.
Highest bidder. Highest bidder.
We, we had interest. We actually had people reach out to us before. I know at least two.
Well, I could see that in that commercial, uh, deal, that, uh, service restoration. But the minute they, we would do that, they turn that into a parking lot for their, uh, vehicles, um, commercial vehicles. We'll catch hell for that.
That's not a problem.
That's not our problem. That's the new owners. So that's the thing, no matter what you.
That could have been an administrative building six years ago. Yeah. So, uh, I think it's a great idea. And I, and I think I'd love for us to continue to take the approach, you know, like a, uh, just our one through one philosophy. We've got one problem, let's have three options and then one solution. So we should be looking at that, because, uh, I, and, and I appreciate the park. I think there were initial, that was initial thought. And then it was, hey, let's potentially move the dog park. But I think we should move forward to get it appraised to see what's good. To give us an option.
I think the seven hundred and fifty dollars is, uh, well, the other price I got was twenty six hundred dollars. So I think the seventy, seven hundred and fifty bucks is um, a pretty good deal on an appraisal. And then that way you can make, uh.
And it gave a decision to put a PrAC in for us as well.
Tony, what has to happen to, for that property to be sold, to be used for anything other than a park?
Like the board determined that it's surplus, no longer need it for.
No, I mean, if, if I went and bought it.
I don't know.
I wanted to put an arcade in there.
Well, we've already gone through that. You'd have to go through the rezoning process.
That's what they would have to do.
That's remember, that's what we tried to do. And I don't know if everyone remembers this, but we, in order for us to fast track the zoning, we needed Pinecrest and the, and the, and the adjoining residents to sign off.
For the, for the Girl Scout.
For the Girl Scout, but need to rezone. And then they didn't want to do that. So we've had to go through the long-term rezoning process, which I don't know if anyone remembers, but we were looking to purchase that property. I think it was listed for three fifty. We had taught him down to three twenty five. Even there was some meat on the bone that's still then. So it was a, I mean, it was a no brainer for us at that time. So we wanted to fast track the zoning process. Residents of Pinecrest, I, there were a few that pushed back and blocked that fast track rezoning, which at that point could have taken us years to go through the zoning process. And at that point, the board did not feel comfortable purchasing that property without, um, a clear pathway to rezoning.
Somebody does their due diligence, they may find that very same thing. And your bidding will be slim to nothing. The only thing I can see is, uh, that won't make anybody happy is turning that into paving to have, to offer additional parking for everybody around that whole area.
Maybe the church wants, I don't know. But I'll make a motion to, um, approve, uh, staff to proceed with the appraisal process for the fun park area with, uh, you want to not exceed on it or just?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah. With a not to exceed, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Uh, anything else for the administrative monthly report? All right. With that, uh, the next one in line is Public Works. Daniel is here, if you have any questions.
So I've gotten some really positive feedback on the, uh, automated mowing. Uh, people are calling it the lawn, uh, Roomba or what is it? What do you call the?
Call it.
Yeah.
It's a Roomba.
So. They see it parked. Um, I don't know if many people actually see it in action, but, uh, they've been very complimentary of how the grass has been well maintained. At least the cutting. Um, what I am getting is that, that we're really struggling with the turf over there. It goes from being wet to dry. And I know that, you know, I'm sure you're, you're aware of it. One of the issues that I have is when we're throwing sod on, you know, in mid-season. And if you're in your yard and you had a dead spot, you would just throw your sod on top of the dead spot. And you water it and over time your roots would, um, it would ground and it would level off. Well, you can't do that on a turf field. Cause when you throw turf on, just on top of bare ground, it lifts up. And when kids are playing on it, they kick it, they trip over it. You know, so I don't know what's going on over there. I know we had an issue with overwatering at one point. And now it seems like everything is super dry. Even the sod that we put on is dead. And kids are tripping on it, um, when they're playing. So can you just give us an update on what's the state of the turf over there?
So when we, like a month ago, month and a half ago, when we went through and put in the new patching, they cut out. So it wasn't just right on top of existing.
It looked like it was.
It was not. It was cut out. It was pulled, uh, manual labor wise, they actually cut it out. They put it back in and staked it. We were off of the field for two and a half weeks after that and have been irrigating just on unforeseen circumstances of the fact that the weather has been going back and forth between cold to warm, has kept it in a dormant state. And then we have not stopped playing since that point. So, uh, it's just really hasn't taken very well, to, to be frank.
Used and abused.
Yeah, it has.
I, and right now there is a break to the irrigation that, um, we're, they're waiting, JSM's waiting for a part.
One more.
Um, that should be here, what, in the next, tomorrow?
Well, but here, hold on. Hold on. It's not just overuse or use. It was overwatered and kids are playing on it. And then it just got ripped to shreds.
Yep.
So then we put, I guess we tried to patch it and then it has not been irrigated appropriately because it, it died. You could say that it's, if you want to say that it's because it sat in a dormant stage, okay. Yeah, we could argue that. But it goes back to root cause. Root cause is we have to stay on top of the maintenance of the turf. So that we don't run into these situations where I'm going to do damage control in mid-season, which the probability of success for that is fifty fifty at best. So we, we spend all that time and we click, and this is the, this is what I get from air, the, the thousands of people that use that, that facility, whether it's in the leaves or what else, we shut down for the summer. Which all of our kids are home during the summer and we basically closed that part down at the peak of when our kids would use them. We spent all this money. We get it looking great. Then we open it back up and it's not maintained and it goes to shit or mileage. So I don't know. I know we've talked about getting someone that specializes in turf. We, we have to do something because we just keep spending money on, on those fields. And they just have to be properly maintained. If it's, and if we've got someone that's been in charge of, you know, landscaping or lawn or whatever, we want to call that person's leaving, someone, I mean, we, this building is right here. Someone should be keeping an eye on those, on those fields. You can look and say, hey, you know, irrigation runs this time. We haven't had any rain. Let's throw some water on it. I mean, to me, it's unacceptable for this building to be here and our department heads to be here. And for those fields to not be properly maintained.
So I'll touch on that. Um, last year we didn't do. So I'll touch on that. Um, last year, we didn't do any patchwork during the, during the winter.
So we just closed it down for the summer?
No, no.
Oh, during the winter?
During.
Okay, I got you. Okay, yeah.
So, so come springtime, you saw it.
Yeah.
Probably more than anybody, it was a mud hole. So the attempt at doing these patch repairs, uh, uh, I mean, I can give you the excuses of, and, and you know, cold weather, wet, water issues. One day, what, a couple of weeks ago, it poured for like all weekend and the irrigation was going at the same time. So it has literally been a weird winter. The patching was an attempt to try to alleviate what we anticipate to be.
To further damage.
Yeah.
I, I get the intent and, and I'm not, please don't take this as, I might have been a little harsh, but that wasn't my intent. Cause I know how difficult it is to manage those, those fields. For one, what's, what's under that layer of turf is just really bad soil.
Yeah.
Uh, and so there's, in order to truly fix it, we'd have to spend a lot of money, um, which we don't have.
What's our vendor saying?
For.
Is it?
We're still using Mainscape?
Was he telling us?
No, we're not using Mainscape.
So we're using JSM for the actual turf mowing, the irrigation, I believe, still lays with Mainscape, but we just moved over to JSM. Because that was actually a gap.
For the year.
But is it, is, are we saying that's just from, well, they're not mowing anymore or they're doing some? But we need a, we need a management, we need someone to manage the turf, manage the, the fields.
I would think that our, our vendor would be telling us or recommending to us what needs to be done to fixes.
Yeah, and I don't know if they, part of the solution is like, you know, in some facilities, what they do during seasons where there is uh a lot of use or whatever, they just overseed, just, you know, that they put rye on it or other things, just to create some substance. Um, so I don't know what the solution is, but if we can get some specialists in here to help us.
JSM is the company, they just took over the irrigation, January one from Mainscape. Let us go back, let's talk to them with Scott leaving. Um, let us, let's, let us put a plan in place and come back to you guys.
What I would suggest, and I guess I don't think two weeks of those fields, it's enough time.
I agree and, and Mainscape.
So. What was, who recommended two weeks?
For the shutdown, for the winter? That was the only time period?
For the repair.
No, but I understand too.
Because I'll tell you, it was a week and I guess that was a year, every day that week and they were playing on it. Like three days after that was installed, there were people out there.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and that's part of the problem too, is, is we don't have anyone regulating the, the field use. But if you look at it, the amount of hours that are spent on that field can compare to when it's not being played on. It, if you were to time it out, it's only used a couple of hours a day. Out of a twenty-four hour clock, there, it might be four hours where there's, where all those fields are being used. So the fields get, they get rest and you're talking about kids, it, it's just they're, the turf has to be, you know, the right type of turf has to be maintained, the water has to be regulated, so you can't have, it can't, can't be wet, can't be, you know, can't go dry. Like there is, there, something has to happen.
And I agree with you, like I went over there and it looks like it's, and I know it happened, but it looks like it's much higher than the regular turf. Like the size, it looks like a rug, like they're just lifting more and more.
Yeah.
I know it does, you know, I, I just, I wasn't happy with it at all. And then my question would be, you got, you met with the leagues and what was their feedback in addition to what Doug just heard? Cause that's what you.
It's on par with, yeah, with Doug saying, it's honestly, fields four and five, can't keep them wet enough, they, they drain off immediately. Uh, fields two and three are mud pits and retain water, no matter what. It's the slightest amount of water, the drainage doesn't exactly do it, doesn't cut it. So you have two fields that are completely dry, two fields that stay swampy and then you got one field that's kind of like a hit or miss, just depending on how much.
And that's where the challenge comes in, because they were, they were created different times, they've got different sub soils under them. So you have to manage how much east, each field differently, like to your point, four and five operates differently than two and three, and then you've got one. So that's what I'm saying, it, I, I know it's challenging, it, it's not an easy solution, but if we've got someone that's responsible and that state that sits in this building, you should be able to monitor it and create, you know, custom routines or scheduling for them. So I'm just saying, just pay some attention to it. I know you guys have been, but it's, cause it, it only takes a little bit for those fields to go from good to bad. It almost happens in like thirty days.
And the more I, I, this is what year two that I'm here, the more I'm seeing, I think there's it, it's too much, the demand is, it's too much. So to your, to answer your question about the two weeks, that was the only two, two weeks that we didn't have any leagues that had already rented the fields.
But we have an agreement with the leagues that one is too wet, we tell them not to do it, we, we, we have to look at our assets.
But it's not the leagues though, when they shut the fields down, the leagues don't play.
Oh, I know, but, but what I was saying is I personally don't think, and I spoke with somebody on, that two weeks was enough time for those areas. We could have moved the leagues to the other fields, I, I don't know, another option, but I don't think two weeks was enough. And given that it is cold, that, that things do get dormant at this time, like they're not growing as fast, that's why you're cutting them, you know, much longer in between. But I, I, I just think there are multiple things that over there.
Yeah, it is.
It's not one thing, I think it's more.
And the only way to solve it is if you
Re-do everything.
Resurface to all those fields.
It's better than where we were at this time last year. I don't think we're, we're where we need to be, but I think we've made progress.
Okay.
But we will, we'll go back and put.
Yeah, we have talked with some subject matter experts that manage uh larger collegiate fields that have just as much play or more uh from lacrosse to football to the, the NFL fields. So we've actually talked to some people doing that and they're, they're working on new strands that actually grow during colder weather. Uh, that may be something that we can look at in the future and and honestly, be, between that and just trying to get our irrigation uh locked back in, I know Scott's only been on board a couple more months before me. And by the time he really got it wrangled in, we were switching contracts into JSM. So there's been growing pains across the board with management of the field. So.
All right, thank you.
We'll continue to work on. Back.
Um, is there any way that we can get a, a, a closed sign at the dog park? Or like, you know how we have the fence, cause we put new sod, but there's not an actual sign that says it's closed? Because people are still utilizing that area. I was there with Ed and I mean, I didn't say anything. But the gate is there, the dogs just jump over and they were literally on top of it and then I saw there was no sign. I mean, there's an assumption that it's closed.
Yeah.
But.
Well, we emailed all of the dog park members and told them of that, but putting a sign up, we can remind them.
Yeah, it's something so small.
Can you, at the next meeting, can you also get us a, um, a six months or maybe a year-to-date usage numbers?
That's going to PrAC at their next meeting and we'll duplicate that as an item for you.
What are you talking about? Dog park?
Yes, we have. So actually I took decibel reading, we took decibel readings with the sheriff today at the fun park. Um, there were eight, no, seven dogs there um barking. So we took uh decibel readings like you all had requested. I know the PrAC members have been uh monitoring the fun park um and the dog park. We've, Laura ran the numbers for revenue and for dog park users and time of day and number of memberships. So
Resident.
All of that information's going to the next PrAC meeting, but we can bring that to you. Um, I would say the second meeting in March, that way we can have PrAC give feedback on it.
Thank you.
Electronic fill on the bathroom, is that the first time or on the report? Well, to, to unlock the doors for the restrooms?
Uh, might be a, just the actual one that was left in there. It was only one-time failure for the bathroom and that was the time the fire department was called.
So that.
Yeah, that was the one time, but now that's all.
That, that, okay, all right, so it's not the second one. And then my final, I mean, I just, my final feedback regarding the water quality. Um, on our standards, it does say that I believe it's, it's two months with elevated uh levels of any of the components. We'll go back upstream and start testing those ponds and I think we need to do that. So I don't know if staff like that, who's collecting now knows of it, but we can follow up with L that needs to, we need to find out the cause.
What's the issues? Nitrites?
Uh, I think phosphorus nitrate, it was multiple, it was multiple things, so um.
Yeah, that was the deal.
That, that was the deal why we reduced it, but then.
See if we can locate.
The pond, that's in the pond standards.
Yeah.
To go upstream.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whenever you have consecutive uh.
I thought it was two, right?
Two or two, yeah.
Two or more, then you gotta start going upstream.
Yeah.
And testing upstream.
And then how are we doing with the closing of the fun park gates?
Fixed.
Cause, but we're consistently closing them?
No, because we have staff that don't um have the capabilities of getting there. Uh, but we have contacted the tow company, they placed their sign and we've told them to tow any vehicle that's in there. And speaking with Ed Moore, the president of Eagle Point, um, he told me that there are very few of any cars that are parking there. He actually sent out communication to his HOA um that, hey, don't park there, you're liable to be towed. Um, so we're.
So how many days? Because I'll tell you, I noticed that they were not being closed. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So I wasn't sure if those directions not given clearly to staff? Or can we reschedule the staff to close it? Cause I mean, what is the point of half, you know what I mean, closing half days and closing, I, just be consistent.
Right, typically it's the pool people that are closing the um, the gates, so.
Could it be our maintenance people closing?
They're not here that late at night.
Yeah.
That's for the issue.
The issue is the scheduling, so the pool staff is the only ones that stay past four. And to be able to close it at dusk, obviously would need to be somebody from the pool staff. Opening it up is not an issue.
Yeah.
Opening up is not a problem at all, but it's the closing.
And that's something, you know, to consider if, if the dog park does go to the fun park is having an automatic um gate.
Just like.
Just, yeah.
I mean, it's something we might want to consider in the future is having a, you know, parks and rec part-time position for someone that's between four and seven or something like that, cause we've got, we've got usage out here every night. It'd be nice to have someone on staff just driving around.
Something else for them to do.
Yeah.
Oh, there is.
That's it.
I mean, you could do, you could do pool maintenance at night, you know, so between four and, or let's say the close, what time's it closing out? Well.
Thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Thirty minutes before.
So five-thirty, something like that, you know? So, and there's, they're there, they're doing, the pool gets closed, they do cleanup, add chemicals or whatever, then they drive over, you know, over to the soccer complex, do any maintenance, clean the bathrooms, whatever. I don't know, it's just something to think about.
Anything else for Daniel?
Uh, oh, the guy, I'm sorry, just a question on the towing. Do we have a, a sign that Acme puts up, that, does it say tow away zone?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and it has the phone numbers and all that kind of.
They posted their own. We have the MUTCD compliance signs up there saying no parking liable.
And then tow away zone.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure. Oh, they have to, because the statute is very heavy-handed if you don't comply.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Daniel and I went out this morning and with Jim Torba from Heritage Golf, looking at potential sites to store the pressure washer in the Kubota. We've got some challenges, so it's not gonna be an easy fix, but we'll hopefully come up with something.
Are you building a, building something?
Not yet, but we might put a tent up, I don't know. We'll, we'll figure out how to do it. I'll, I'll report in a few. But it was, it would, the equipment will not fit in the building, we hope that they would do.
Okay.
So we gotta go someplace.
Because it's too big?
Other than training it every day from here.
Because it's too big?
Yes, correct.
Um.
Yeah, between both pieces of equipment, it's, it's pretty big. Ones.
It's a four, it's a four-seater side-by-side Kubota with a bed still attached to it, that's a large vehicle. The even larger vehicle is the Spurly Wisco combination, which is about sixteen foot from nose to tail.
Head to head, yeah.
Yeah.
So as soon as we get somebody to pass the background and drug checks and then we get, then we'll start the training and then we'll put the list of what we're gonna do, but we're making progress, that's the good news. Uh, kudos to how fast you got the guardhouse repaired. That was absolutely record time for it to be fixed.
Safety signs, you'll see safety signs were installed today.
Oh, I saw the safety sign.
I made sure you can see it on the matterspace.
Especially the one that's right over the entrance.
Absolutely.
It's almost as big as the nine foot.
Safety Security and I are working together to try to de- develop a mitigation device so that there's like a, a photo beam that sensor veil that goes across then actually captures somebody that breaks the height barrier and some sort of sign that actually starts saying stop and/or barrier drops the uh, the barrier back down, so a vehicle can't go through. So we mitigate. Yeah.
Pelican Guard House was hit three times in a matter, in less than sixty months. So that's what has prompted all of these precautions.
Each time was progressively worse than the previous.
Well, the last one did a really.
And then it, and it's gonna get painted now?
They ready.
No, it's already been, it's already been painted to touch up, so that you can see it right now. It actually looks decent, it's not.
Yeah.
Visible. Elias Brothers is still on schedule to come through and paint not only that, but several monuments out there as well.
Okay, cause I thought there was gonna be a color change.
There is, there's a color change coming.
Okay.
You wouldn't even know it was hit from what was damaged. So, but if you haven't been in yet, since a new sign today, you will notice.
I'm, I'm waiting for the new color spot.
Okay, the new sign will get your attention, trust me. But anyway, very good job. It was very quick.
Yeah, so anything else for Daniel, for Public Works, Parks and Rec, everything else? All right, last but not least, we have utilities. Bill and also are here. Anybody have any questions for these gentlemen?
Lookie there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll get you next time.
All right.
You.
Tony, you're up.
Oh, Joy, uh, it, it, first is a resolution outlining the qualifying period for the elections in a form of the notice to go in the newspaper. And just asking your approval of the res- adopting the resolution and the staff will make sure the notice gets placed in the newspaper of the qualifying period for candidates for the board of members, uh, board supervisors.
Monk will approve twenty twenty-four oh nine.
Second. You call the vote.
All in favor? A pause.
And who's, who's up, Flavia and Bob?
And, and. No, Ed, Ed, Flavia and Bob, yeah, sorry.
You and I are not up.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, agree.
Uh, thank you.
So we'll, we'll work on getting that ad out.
Oh, yeah, I'll, yep, come on, now that we have it. And now that I know how to do it to the portal directly.
Perfect.
Uh, next is a topic that has been, is outlined in my memorandum, been discussed for a dozen years, or ten years at least, as to how to handle the roadway tracks in Town Lakes Office Park, Fairway Lakes Office, Fairway Lakes Office Park, and Worthington Commerce Park. And did I miss one, East Links, I guess, not East Links, but the one that, did I miss a road in all this or not? Like, is it called East Links back off of, okay, but that, that's, okay, that's in the condominium association, it's a separate one. But that seems to be active.
It's another one?
East Link seems to be active though.
Okay.
As opposed to dissolved. Um, and so what I did in this, in this phase and, and talking with Chelsea, getting some guidance from her also, just outlining some initial tasks if the board were supposed to go ahead with it and what the costs might be, just to get through this first aspect of it. And it's over thirty thousand dollars. And at that point in time, may not even have any positive results with regards to, but we'll have an idea as to how much resistance or problem we'll have. What I found interesting was, and I put that in the uh, my last paragraph, I thought was interesting, that the piece that Lee County took by eminent domain uh at Fairway Lakes Office Park and across from Griffin, Gateway Boulevard, the amount of money that Lee County paid for that and its deposit in their court registry is two hundred and six thousand, two hundred dollars. So, and no one has stepped up, they've not reorganized or reconstituted that organization, so there's no party that can come and get that money. It's kind of interesting, that's why I put that in there. And, and I also included an excerpt from a, a motion that was filed by one of the parties and that's at page six thirty-eight. Uh, I don't know if anybody knows Nate Tuttle, Nate Tuttle, T U T T L E. Apparently there's a sub-association in Gateway, according to one of the attorneys in that lawsuit. He's a board president of the Fairway Office Center Owners Association, a sub-association. And that's composed of three, the board's composed of three owners who own property within Fairway Lakes. And apparently Mr. Tuttle advised that, you know, they have to re-establish it, identify and get their cooperation and that there were no funds available to do that and they would not do that. So I, I, I guess going back to the whole idea of trying to get the parties to voluntarily and willingly come to the table, it, it seems remote if not impossible. So the only two opportunities would be if the board wants to initially, again, do, update the title records, update the search, get some alter surveys to see what improvements and encroachments exist on those roadway areas and possibly do an inspection by the district engineer. Uh, and then perhaps try to file a petition in the circuit court and see if that's successful or see if the property owners in those organizations would agree to, basically enter into an agreement where they would file the petition to appoint a trustee to have the property then conveyed to the district. Uh, they, they get the court to do that and that part of the consideration for the district. Uh, they, they get the court to do that. And that part of the consideration for the district. Uh, that would be the consideration for the district acquiring the roads. This district would help fund that process. But it doesn't seem like anybody's willing to come to the table. I don't know.
It says, I've got a tunnel that lives in Gateway Greens. Is this tunnel?
No idea. I didn't, I did not go any further than that.
That guy's an attorney. I'm wondering if it's him.
I don't know.
Not that bad. Uh, I thought Sam Sorelli, uh, Sorelli. Had, uh, some involvement in that management deal. He owns the building Denny Grimes is sitting on the corner. But what, what would be the opportunity for them just to somewhat like quickly indeed that to us? And then we simply treat it like, uh, the other office park, uh, where the, uh, Bo Bar Deli's at.
Uh, again, no one seems to be willing to remember. If you remember years ago, we even talked to Brian DeVora.
Yeah.
Yeah. And he, he initially appeared, he initially retained an attorney and appeared on behalf of the defunct dissolved corporation. And then the, the, the county said, well, wait a minute, do you really have the authority to do that? And then he said, I'm not. I'm not even sure if I can sign and agree to the compensation. I mean, there's all kinds of files.
Had an opportunity to do that, should they agree?
Then he ultimately resigned. I mean, so he told he was wrong. He's not involved in any of those and he would not participate. Even in, he was not able to fully participate in eminent domain. So in other words, there's two hundred six thousand dollars sitting there. If they reconstitute the Fairway Lakes Property Owners Association.
They could have access.
They get that money and then we have an entity that we can deal with. But according to Nate Tuttle, they said it's a sub-association. They're not.
I'm wondering if the, I think there's what, ten owners, ten properties.
Oh, I think so, isn't that?
I think it's ten or eleven. But does anybody talk to any of them? Because they may have a different opinion here if they knew that two hundred six thousand dollars was involved.
Yeah, I don't even know if they know. I'm serious.
Let me do some checking.
Yeah, I think that again, that might, for Fairway Lakes, that might be the easiest route to see if they could reconstitute the association. They'd get the money, they could maybe do some repairs. But I think at the end of the day, the, the board would still want to have the district engineer or someone evaluate the condition of those roads. In that if they were in really bad shape, either make them bring it up to code, up to snuff, you know, prior to conveyance. And or have as a capital improvement project and special assess just those benefited property.
Benefited property.
The board can do. And we can go through that normal assessment process with the one seventy.
I wanna get a hold of some of these owners. See what they say.
So that's again, the ultimate. The board has the ability to engage in eminent domain proceedings, but that's expensive.
I, I mean, if you're sitting there owning property over there and the, the, the whole infrastructure is falling apart, I think you'd wanna protect your investment. And this to me seems like an easy way to get out. Plus there's a, a, a little reward of the two hundred six thousand dollars that they have opportunity to get.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't get that. That just.
I'm not sure I understand it either, Ed.
I, I think what the issue is, you got a bunch of people that don't know what's going on.
Well, and part of it might be, there might be a concern that if they reinstate, reconstitute, that there might be some liabilities out there. That, that, that our entity would have, you know, they say from exposure, but again, I'm trying to get into their.
Is there? So if you get the consent, and if all, of all the owners consensual on a, a quick lane need to pass it over to us.
Well, but. I like what you're saying, Ed, as far as it could just be, um, a lack of just the, uh, understanding or knowing.
Yeah.
And if we're going to communicate to those folks, I think we need to have something drafted up, Tony. It's like, here's just a, a summary of current state.
I, I think, I think, and I think it would be better from a non-legal perspective, I'm more, no, it's like, do a little summary. So here's what the board wants to do.
Staff do it. But what I don't have.
And get, and have a meeting of all the property owners and say, guys, do you know this is going on?
That's probably the first thing. Is that, that just real quick call will give you an idea as to the, the, the problem you got. If they are talking to those owners and individually they're all telling them basically go pound sand, then it's gonna make it a little bit more complicated.
But here's, you know.
I don't think they know what's going on.
But I think there's, the, what I'm concerned about is if we're just practically reaching out and just having a casual conversation. I wanna make sure that there's a script or something where we're, that we're saying the exact same thing to all those property owners. And we're giving them, you know, what is the right amount of information that we should be giving from it, whether it's, it's hand calling or if it's staff calling or something. I want to just be very cautious what we're.
Again, I don't want to, I can't give them legal advice. You're not my client. I don't want to be in a position, but just, you know, maybe the bullet point is the board has expressed an interest in acquiring these roads. We've had tremendous difficulties, you can see from all these prior memorandums and actions. Now, do you all want to do this?
And are you aware that your managing entity is defunct?
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, uh, or the, the, the association is, and are you aware of the eminent domain action and the money in the court registry? And have you, you may want to talk to an attorney about how you can access that.
This is just one of the three or four.
That's correct.
Not.
So what is?
Maybe small bites. I don't know, but you're right. That's just one.
Tony, what is the downside for the board if we do nothing?
Uh, in my opinion, none, because we have, we have easements for purpose of our utilities.
Okay.
And, and I can't recall the exact class. I think I referenced in a prior memo about we have ingress and egress generally over some of the others. But we have no obligation to maintain those.
That, that's what we don't wanna have, get in the position of, of having to go in there and bail, bail these people out.
Right.
Because there's more of them. That's the problem.
Yep, there's.
So.
But we, we wouldn't necessarily be required to go in and bail them out, only if we chose to intervene.
Yeah. It's just not a good situation.
Want these roads?
Do what?
Why do we want the roads?
Well, I think the big thing is it's part of the community and it hits an eyesore. I mean, it, it looks bad. And it's right, right in the middle of the community. It's, it's a dump.
Yeah, I mean, one, one aspect is, I mean, uh, the board could actually, if, if the. Infrastructure and roads are non-compliant with the development orders for those roads. Arguably, there could be a code enforcement action. You notify code enforcement and have. Within, within the, within those locations.
There is one that is at least four inches. Yeah. Yeah, or four feet. I don't know. I mean, literally, it's a.
The, the other two that are problem areas, they are in more our public right of, they, they're, they're in our flowway. Or not flowway, our traffic way. Uh, so it's something I don't think we wanna just sit back and wait and see what happens and what if. We wanna try to be proactive and either get those people to step up or step up and give it to us.
Actually, I don't think even the striping of that road is done. So that's out of compliance too. I know the trees are.
That whole.
The tree, the piping, that the OT is not compliant and the sidewalk. Those three are the main things that, that, that I recall.
And is there no entity that if something is now unsafe?
I don't think, to be honest, I don't, I don't think they're aware of it.
Can't go in and.
I don't think.
Yeah, what happened was when WCI, when, after the bankruptcy or right around the bankruptcy, if you look at the timing. All, all the, all the board members were WCI employees or appointees. Cause WCI formed these associations when they plotted and developed it. And WCI, all those people resigned. Uh, they, they, to go back and look at all the prior memos, they resigned. Uh, and so.
Oh, isn't the, isn't South Trail, uh, don't they own some land in there?
Yeah, so that's. So, so, yeah, so the South Trail, then so there's one.
And, and those guys are pretty responsible.
There's fifteen, fifteen, like, just, you know, looking in here, skinny dogs would be one, two. And just two, the two empty lots and then, uh. The rock sushi, the whole building is one entire owner. And then the individual ones, what the floppy offices, those are the ones that are individuals.
Yeah.
But that's what you have the most.
Oh, that might be the sub-association.
You could go talk to Greg, your skinny dogs, someone A O K.
I mean, I'll talk to this one, yeah.
And you talk to Rockin'.
Yeah.
So I mean.
Those are the two that we were going to buy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, that's.
And then someone from South Trail. So there's four potential.
Yeah.
And, and if they, and if they wanna get copies of the pleadings and that, uh, and the domain action. I can.
Reaching out to Steve and reaching out to the owner of. Cause I know.
I was gonna say Denny Grimes.
That's Denny Grimes.
You know him, so you handled that one.
As part of the conversation, as to Fairway Lakes, part of the conversation could be. You may or may not have been aware of that eminent domain proceeding. You may or may not be aware of those two hundred six thousand dollars sitting in the court registry. And if they wanted copies of those pleadings, I, I've got most of them in my system now, because we were named initially, if you recall, for a water building. We got pulled out, but I still got all the violence.
The language, so.
He can, he can give the bullet points. So you want to do the task authorization or not? Cause that's, that's what we're going to.
We'll, we'll find out real, what, what kind of interests there is of the people who own the, the, the lots.
So the first step would be, are they interested otherwise?
Okay, so do we, do we wanna take a step back then and not tackle all of them at one time and just focus on Fairway Lakes? We've already approved on doing the lighting with FPL. So, and then we can tackle Fairway Lakes and then in six months we can try to tackle Commerce Lakes.
It's more of an eyesore than the other two at this point.
Yeah.
The fair, or, uh, uh, West Lakes is not real good.
Yeah, I mean, Trevor Lakes.
Well, this is where Flavia, I think if you can go with staff and make the list of all the code enforcement or the, uh, violations.
Okay.
And then.
They're gonna go after though.
No, but I mean.
Let's the county figure that one.
And then.
Well, you get Carlo on it, okay? Cause he's.
Well, I mean, one, one thing I find interesting is because once they finish the roundabout, it'd be a nice entrance by the fire station. Then you hit the other bad parts of the road, I guess, after that.
Welcome to the, uh.
But it's just, it does not look good for Gateway. It, it is right in the middle of the community. It looks horrible.
So.
I'll prepare some bullet points, work on with Chelsea on it.
And we'll keep that up instead of doing a full task authorization. We'll just do a not exceed ten thousand dollars.
Oh, it's not gonna cost that.
Not to exceed ten thousand. We can still do a small, Tony can create a project and start to charge it. We'll charge that out of, um. The board's contingency initiatives, project fund. Uh, we'll divide and conquer on contacting, uh, the different property owners and, um, I'll do, I'll handle code enforcement. And our landlord, you were gonna handle Denny Grimes skinny dogs. You were gonna handle Rockin'.
He's gonna hit, he's gonna hit skinny dogs.
Skinny dogs.
I'll take, I'll take my station and rock sushi.
Okay. So maybe if we can get enough of them to start to talk to one another, then they can figure it out themselves.
The other two have any monetary value in like this one does?
That I'm not aware of. Um, and I, I can do a real quick check.
Just take one at a time, see what happens.
Okay, so.
See if it goes anywhere. Yeah.
So Flavia, are you good with the not to exceed?
Again, what I find interesting, just as an aside, yeah, for point three, three acres, it's two hundred six thousand dollars.
Wait, hey, so I've got one, one quick thing.
Of a road.
While we're talking this, so we can either tackle all these people individually, or we can organize a meeting and invite them. And have a conversation all at once.
I, I think what I do is find out one, talking to the ones that we each know. Get an ideas that there's, the last thing what to do is to get in there and have one rotten egg, ruin it for everybody. Cause you get the majority of them in there, uh.
So we can have, have a conversation. We can organize a meeting.
Maybe have a meeting and invite them in.
And be a, be a, have to be a notice meeting.
Do what?
We can have a notice meeting in the board. Can you wanna have them all together in the board also? Because you'll have your, your feedback from the individuals.
Have a liaison and.
I think we can do that.
Let's see what happens.
So by the second meeting in March, will everybody try to?
Yeah.
Come back with some type of follow-up?
Yep.
All right. Tony, that way you can start your task.
Okay, and yeah, I'll create a new file folder for that. Just, in your motion, Chelsea, or just?
Just direction.
Direction.
Direction, okay. Uh, next item, uh, is with regards to community patrol, roving patrol. Uh.
Let, let me, I'll take that one.
Okay.
So.
Oh, rats, I shouldn't put under yours then.
No, you're, you're gonna explain. So what prompted this? What prompted this was, um, Pelican Preserves Safety and Security Subcommittee is starting to have conversations with writing the scope. For their new, uh, access control contract. Right behind them is the access control contract with Stony Brook. That we're gonna have to start to have conversations with them about. Now, over in Stony Brook, um, the district holds the contract. Um, and the district, uh, out of district funds pays for the button seat at the guardhouse. Uh, the HOA pays for the roving patrol, um, out of their HOA funds. Over in Pelican, it's a little bit different historically, um, and Bobby can chime in at any point or Carol. Uh, historically, the district has paid for both the roving patrol and the button seat at the guardhouse in Pelican. This has been a contentious topic. Um, I will say from a, from a staff perspective, um. Having a roving patrol, patrol, non-district assets, I have concerns about. Uh, but Tony has provided a memo and ultimately before safety and security got too far down the pipeline. With drafting a scope and putting in a lot of effort and then it coming to the board and you all. Mixing it or, you know, whatever it may be. Um, I didn't want them to invest a lot of time into something that. Would not pass here at the board level. So that's ultimately why I'm asking, um, I've asked Tony to provide this memo so that way we can. Pass back down the chain to Safety and Security Subcommittee on them drafting their access control. And I know Pelican Preserve, their HOA, the Community Association, has had some concerns on future funding of the roving patrol. Um, because ultimately if it falls off from us, they may have some, um, desire to pick that up on their side or not. Um, so there are financial implications to, uh, the board's decision.
Just out of curiosity, do we have, I think Pelican has it. I'm not sure if we have it, Stony Brook. Um, do we have a? Uh, a visual of the roads and something color-coded that shows these are who, what roads belong to whom?
I, we can.
We, we can do that very.
Oh, you guys had one at the, at the gatehouse.
There was supposed to be one. I don't know. Because we just said, well, we're not gonna let, not let anyone in. You know, if someone comes and challenges, wants to get in, we'd let them in. The, the book says that the rover will follow them. And the minute they go off of public roads, we call the police to come and. Challenge them. We've never done that, but it's in the book.
Yeah.
Uh, but to just kinda elaborate, Chelsea gave a great summary. Um, within Pelican, this is for twenty years now. The, the, uh, security firm mans the gatehouse, they man the roving patrol. The roving patrol has, I, it's somewhere between nineteen and twenty-five points in the community that they're supposed to go to. And do something that acknowledges they were there. You know, they're not off somewhere sleeping. And they've also monitored the RV storage lot. So. This has always been funded through the non-underlord tax. The Community Association would obviously like to continue that because as Chelsea said, if some of these would fall off, if. If we said as a board, we don't wanna have any more roving patrol responsibilities because of the liability or, or whatever. Then the tax assessment for that function would drop in the non-underlord. But it would be picked up by the community associate. They went through a twenty-seven and a half percent increase two years ago. They're not interested in picking up any additional monies. Uh, Safety and Security has worked on. The post-orders that would say, um. We will no longer have anything other than guardhouse duties. I think that's pretty close to where they're at.
They, they made the post-orders match the contract.
To drift.
They were polar opposites. So they, they've worked hard and have gotten the post-orders up to date to match the contract.
Well, uh, okay, you know, I would, the only comment I would take exception to, the contract requires the rover. It's in there. Okay, maybe the new contract wouldn't, but the existing contract. So we currently have. The contracts and the post-orders that secure tasks that used to be there, the contract and the current contract with Wiser, our current vendor, and we're gonna go out this year. Where, what is the question for the board? The overwhelming majority of the community. Including the Safety and Security Group really doesn't wanna change it. They'll change it if they have to, but they just like to keep things as they are. And I talked to Dean Groves today and his assistant to make sure that I'm expressing their opinions. And that's why you had the Community Association show up and make that pitch earlier. And she talked mainly about the rover, but it's everything. It's the rover, it's the town center and it's the, uh, the RV lot. Because these are enhancements and benefits to our residents. So with Tony's opinion saying, yeah, maybe we don't necessarily, we wanna be in that business, but we can. And the question for us is, yeah, there will be an assumed liability, as Tony has pointed out, but it's no greater or less than it's been for the last twenty years.
So it's legal, but it's a policy decision.
Yes, it is.
So we're looking to the board for the policy.
So that's why it's in front of us.
And just out of curiosity, Bob, like in your community, what value does the rover bring?
Well, it's mostly mental, uh, and I'll, I'll back on it.
Security.
About eight or nine years ago, about eight or nine years ago, we tried to be back, tried to cancel it. Okay, we didn't see a lot of value in it, to be honest with you. And it's a lot of money. It's almost four hundred thousand dollar a year. Well, we had the pits forks, you know, remember you cut down the trees here? That's what we had as a reaction. So whether it really provides a benefit or not, mentally, our residents overwhelmingly want it. Now, we have restricted what this guy can do with the rover. He used to be years ago, if you left your garage door open, he'd call you. To say your garage door opened, Mr. Geppert, do you want it? And if a resident said they didn't want that call anymore at ten o'clock at night. There was supposed to be a list that, you know, don't call this guy. But the reality is, so, but at the current time, they're not. So, but at the current time, they're not calling you, but they're still riding around. And the Safety and Security Group, once we get through this kind of an issue, they're going to dig into what his functions will be. As far as calling people if they got a problem. So that's kind of where we're at.
We issued funds.
Now for the uh, for the RV park, I don't think it's anything more than there's cameras in the guardhouse that show it. You know.
I was just curious.
And that's, that's kind of thing. The town center, uh, they, there's no reason for anybody to go there during the day. Because we've got plenty of staff there. It's more of, it's a door opener, it's water running or something like that. They'll have rounds. I don't know what they are. They need to be developed in the future, a hell of a lot more than they have been in the past. But we would work cooperatively, cooperatively through Safety and Security and the, our uh, public reserve community association to develop that. And if there's anything that gets crazier out of whack, well, then we bring it back.
And, and are we trying to align this with Stony Brook?
No, this is a Pelican, I'm not. Yeah, I know there's a danger there.
Well, first of all, let's just, let me make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. I mean, I just want to make.
We don't know what Stony Brook, I don't, I've never talked to anybody in Stony Brook. I don't know what they want, but I can speak firmly for what Pelican would like.
They did have the rover included at one point.
The rover is included in the district's contract for access control with Stony Brook. But the HOA pays for and dictates.
You get a separate invoice.
Separate invoice and so.
Been doing that for years or something?
Yes.
Okay. And so they're different right from the, from the.
And Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. I believe they go so far as to um, like securing of the. Your clubhouse and patrolling and wrote and making sure there's no riffraff going on um, outside of the role. But from, from the Pelican side, um, again, it's a policy decision. Um, just uh, again, I am. Full transparency, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, uh, whatever the direction is, whatever the policy is set. Um, again, we're, we're getting ready to evaluate the Stony Brook Access Control Contract this year as well. So I would expect that to be treated similar if the HOA desired that, whatever, whatever it may be.
And if the HOA didn't want to do it, if Stony Brook doesn't want to change anything, and Pelican did, well, that would be okay too. But I think they should have the opportunity to, to opine, whether they want it or not.
So this is on the agenda so that we do what?
So you can make a policy decision on how to handle uh, roving patrols of non-district assets. And then whatever that policy is, if you want to allow that to continue, then we can pass that back to Safety and Security. And they can draft the scope for the new control, access control contract, um, working with the Community Association because it's their assets. Um, or. We cease that at the end of this per contract and um, a-again, write the scope to reflect that. Notify the Community Association that that service would be uh, stopped at the district.
The only thing we're going to do is maintain the guardhouse and nothing else. Yeah, and, and what I was submitted also is that the postors will come back to this board for review and approval after the Safety and Security, just to make sure the board. Is on board, no pun intended, with what has been put in Black and.
Uh, well, we've always had the postors, but I don't know if we ever brought them over here, went to P-PAC.
They have in the past, they've, in the past, they.
I know they went to P-PAC, did they come here?
They were supposed to come here.
Yeah, you're going to make.
Don't have a problem with having a rover. An extra set of eyes out there that goes and looks at stuff, observes and reports. Observes and reports. I do have a problem if they expect. Go up to a door in the town center and shake it to make sure that it's locked. Because I think that's creating a liability for us that we don't want to have. Now, if the guy is driving by, he sees a light on in the, uh, if the door is open. To the kitchen and he sees a light on in the kitchen and it's not supposed to be on, he observes and reports. Who we reports that to? I don't know if it's the association or who, I, I don't know. Who we reports to, but I don't want. I don't want to create any more liability than just observing and reporting.
And right now, I don't think we have any more than that.
And.
But he got a broken window or something like that, or lights are out.
Or if you see a, a irrigation geyser going off.
And these kind of things would only be done.
Two o'clock in the morning.
From eight at night, when it's dark, till eight in the morning. I'm sorry.
No different than the gentleman here earlier with the water, that he expected us.
Oh, no, no, no. We did everything right with that.
Just have the report go to your uh, property manager.
But I think the bigger.
Well, I mean, I don't care who it goes to, but that person should report.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean that that person goes.
He's done a.
And opens the door to see if somebody's in there and say, hello.
Totally agree.
But that's, that's, that's the first piece, Carol. The second is, are we still comfortable with, with that rover? Being um, in, in scope for the district?
Outside of this, because they're going to be doing outside of the.
Well, it's outside of district.
Yeah, it's still in our contract, but we're still.
But it's outside of district assets per se, but it is an overwhelming benefit for the community.
I don't, I don't, I don't doubt, I mean, I, I really agree. I think in Stony Brook, we kind of feel the same way. I don't know, a river doesn't do a whole lot, but people seem to like the fact that they ride around.
Well, and, and as an example, the, I, I believe the RV lot um, had some incidents with break-ins.
During.
During, during the hurricane.
During the hurricane.
And there was the expectation that the roving patrol should have addressed, addressed those, those instances.
And the, the expectation was, they had the cameras, they should have seen it. The problem was, there was no electricity, cameras were out, and nobody could see it. Not that they would run over there and do anything, but, but now we fixed that problem because we got a generator, but yeah, you're absolutely right.
But all right, I, I think we can, staff, staff and the, the committee will hammer that. I think the thing that we have to decide is, are we comfortable with? That being part of the contract, or should it be like Stony Brook where that's also in the HOA's remit and responsibility? That, that's really, me, that's really the topic of conversation. That's, that's what we need to have as good. And are we comfortable with having Pelican one way, Stony Brook another way?
That's the second point.
Yeah, see, I'm quite comfortable with that because then there's no economic change. We've always funded it, people are used to it, they say it, they don't see it. If we change it and they got to pay. It's not going to be a problem for us, but it's definitely going to be a problem for the Community Association.
I mean, it's a change, yeah. But that's, that comes down to policy. Should we be creating consistent policies? And that's what my first question was that I had is, is Stony Brook and Pelican, are the environments the same?
So what?
And they are the same.
It's, it's kind of like the, you know, the Pelican standard for the ponds was always different than the gateway.
If we could say that they're not the same environments than having.
So that's what I was.
Differences to spot.
I mean, in my own mind, it's the Pelican way versus. The, the district way. And I'm, we're quite comfortable with that precedent and having it, but I've said enough. Need some direction, like, I think it's just Chelsea indicates some direction from a policy perspective, uh, with regards to just the general overall.
I think you guys, so they're in your neck of the woods, so. You make the.
I will make the proposal that we continue. Um, the functions of the security firm in terms of a rover and monitoring the RV lot.
And to observe and report.
Yes, with that caveat, absolutely.
All the other, you have to say the Brokey Center.
Well, that's part of the town. When you go to the town.
You only said RV lot, so I want to make sure town center is.
Rover Patrol absolutely takes care of the town center complex and monitors the RV lot.
I'm comfortable with that as long as it's observed and report, nothing more, nothing.
We have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
On favor?
Give that down to.
Now, do we need to do something for Stony? Do we even need to mention it?
Not now.
Okay.
I think that'll, that'll come out.
Let Joe think about that.
Okay.
And that's okay.
All right, next.
Okay, the next one is item number fourteen D. This is a product of uh, come up of. Direction from the board and communications with the attorney for Atlantic Southern paving and seal coating. It resolves any dispute about the paving. And where the district would remit the amount of one hundred and ten thousand five, eight hundred fifty-one dollars is the total amount due to. Atlantic Southern paving and seal coating and would resolve the dispute. So, so that, they gave us what we asked for.
Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
Second.
Hi.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, next one is item fourteen E. The draft AGO letter and certification and memorandum of law. Uh, worked on this with Katie Berkey. Uh, it's probably about ninety-five percent there. It's one of those where you go back and kind of maybe you look at some additional aspects. You're asking for the board to approve basically the form and content of this AGO request and certification. And all, and if we had the direction, I'll work with Katie to finalize it, any last minute little nits or scribblers errors and compile all the exhibits with. In collaboration with her.
And what is this for again?
The Attorney General's request is to disposition of the roads in Stony Brook, that the district invades interest in the association.
So they would not even go through all those hoops.
Correct.
To get their roads.
Correct.
Okay, so moved.
I'll second that.
Um, favor?
Thank you.
So when is that going to be submitted?
Uh, won't be until next week.
What?
Probably, probably by next Friday. Again, I need to compile it.
And this is a question, where do we ever land with whether or not we should be billing your services directly? Which, whether it should be absorbed in our fund or Stony Brook fund? I know that we're. Still sitting out there.
Right now, I'm separately billing it to the Stony, I have a separate line item or separate purchase order and a separate. File number for Stony Brook items, and right now I'm assigning all the tasks.
Okay, if we're going to do that, can we just have some examples of how that precedent has been set? If you, if we have done. If we have had Tony work on in other communities and we have billed those communities, I don't know if we.
That has to. Pelican Reserve has a separate. Pelican, whenever we have a task authorization for something that is, or a request, the greater than normal, like the easement thing.
I just want to make sure, because I know that there's, and Joe can speak to it in a second, but I know that there is some dispute from the Stony Brook side. I just want to make sure, if we're going to take a position, that this is the way we've always done it, and then, then the debate would be on whether. Whether or not uh, council is acting on behalf of the district or acting on behalf of Stony Brook, and that's. That conversation, but I want to make sure that we, we have clear precedent that this is what we've done in the past and it's apples down.
Acting on behalf of the district.
Correct.
Extra requests for things we wanted, we just funded that, realizing it was out of the scope of normal business.
And I think the argument would be, if, if council is acting on behalf of the district in regards to this, Stony Brook has its own attorney. So they haven't requested council's input.
We've never had that situation.
So that, that's where it becomes great for me.
Our Community Association is always accepting. No, I think it was like fourteen hundred. For track B fourteen. Was it fourteen hundred, I thought?
No, there was multiple things. There was track B fourteen, which was separate, separate, which you. I believe you all pined on and said that because the districts would be receiving the general benefit.
That's basically the consideration for it.
The, the ones that are still in question are.
All restoration cameras.
The, the cameras, yeah, all of the other bills that are dedicated solely for the Stony, all of the Stony Brook things that have come up over the last. Six months. So if it's this AGO, if it's working on um, the cameras that, at the guardhouse.
The contract for security and the breach.
Yep.
Because I treat the same, when I, for, for example, if there's any concern about the Pelican Reserve contract with Wiser, that incident that occurred. I bill that to Pelican Reserve, because it's a specific to Pelican Reserve item.
But I, I, my question for, for clarification here is, if, let's say if Tony was working on something for Pelican. If Pelican said, Tony, we'd also like for you to look into these things. It's a request coming from Pelican, so therefore, absolutely, we, we would bill. I think what I'm not clear on is, I don't think Stony Brook has requested additional input from, that's the argument. It, it hasn't requested additional input because they have their own attorney, so. Does anybody have a problem with Joe just?
Well, no, I guess, just for clarification, yeah, I represent the district and there might be specific issues specific to Stony Brook that arise.
Sure.
And so it might be in consultation with, with, with staff, as to addressing an issue specific, for example, the contract with the security vendor. And their actions or non-action concerning that contract. That's solely as to the operation of the district assets solely within Stony Brook. The fact that they have a private attorney. That attorney does not represent the district. So any work that that attorney does is at the direction of her client, that's the association. And I'd take direction from my client, either the board, the chair.
For us, so therefore we're billed.
Yes, and, and because.
The question is, well, you, what are we billing Stony Brook for? So.
You can see my bills. I mean, they're.
I'm just trying to get better understanding, so I can go back to people in Stony Brook when they ask me, Doug Wire, you know, we have an issue with this. And I, I just want to have a good, good answer.
So I think to answer your question, your, your basic question is. We wouldn't even be discussing the turnover of roads if that conversation didn't come from the HOA.
Uh, I don't.
That's not the point here. I really, there is a very important point.
Well, Joe, if, come to the mic if you're going to speak, please. I know, but you spoke anyway.
I didn't want this to get off the red tracks because the fact is that us, Joe McCulca, President of the Master Association of Stony Brook. For another month and a half. In any case, I'm just. And uh, and I just want to say the major distinction here that is often forgotten is that Stony Brook pays the same. O-O one funds that Magnolia Lakes and Gateway Greens pay. We do not, we are not the same. We do not pay the same amount of money to run this community that Pelican does. And we get compared, and I hear, heard it over the years, well, Pelican pays for that, why shouldn't Stony Brook? But we already paid for Gateway to hire Tony to represent Gateway. And what you're doing is giving an example of when Pelican gets charged. Because they don't pay that same operating expense that you do and you do, and that is a distinction. And I think that's something that you were kind of skating around there, but that's probably what rubs the residents of Stony Brook the wrong way. Because we are paying our own attorney's fees, and for us to also pay O-O one fees. Get charged to the O-O four, which are two entirely different accounts, when we've already paid the same full boat amount. Nine hundred and seventy dollars next year, this year, whatever it is, is going to be per door in Stony Brook. In addition to the O-O four money that we pay, just like the rest of us pay. And that's why we get upset when the O-O four gets charged for Tony, because we feel like we already paid him. Just like we feel we've paid a lot of the other staff here. And that's my point.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh.
For that distinction.
Need to clarify that uh, as far as the general administrative cost of Tony's time. And the stuff that he does for the benefit of the district, Pelican Preserve does pay for fourteen percent of that expenses.
How much does it, how, how much does it um, O have for legal, oh no. O four had, I, I thought it was like under a thousand dollars.
It's not much.
I think that's all they had, a thousand dollars in there, the budget.
Yeah, but I think the argument, what Joe was saying, hold, hold on, Joe, Joe, I think what, what Joe was saying is. We all contribute. From a community perspective, our taxes go to. Tony's services, and if those services also overlap specifically into our community, it's paid through that. So I think the argument is, why are we?
The difference is your community has something that nobody else has. Your roads are our roads. All the other communities, our roads are our roads. That's the difference. That's the difference.
I just want to make sure that we can clearly, so if we're taking the stance that we can clearly. You know, articulate it back to Stony Brook HOA and the leaders that here's why we're, we're doing this and here's precedent for it.
Well, that's, that's a, that was very clear. So when we had the road restoration, it was our road, our HOA for it, like stay out of the district. They are not HOA owned roads, so that's why there's an involvement for us.
Yeah, but wouldn't that just, they're, but they're paying taxes for those roads, why wouldn't it? Why wouldn't it be absorbed into what, what's already being paid? Just like if.
Well.
Think of an example, but.
I was going to say, good example, I mean, the fiasco that occurred twenty years ago on the infamous Wetland forty-seven, forty-eight. And that issue.
Well, yeah.
We paid, we paid our own legal fees.
I only brought this up because, and I don't, it's not an agenda items, I don't think we should have any further commu- um, talk on it. But can we put it on the agenda or in a workshop or something? Because I think it needs to be very clear. Or in a workshop or something? Because I think it needs to be very clear. You know, why, you know, the position that we're taking, why we're taking it.
We'll put it at the, with the next workshop.
Yeah, maybe let's put it on the, we could, we could workshop it just so we're. We're clear on it. Yeah. That's fine, I mean.
You can't take action on those, so I would suggest you put that up.
Yeah, and we, we don't need, we don't need to take action, we just need to understand and have a position on it.
But we wouldn't be able to take action.
Right.
But we can talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then do. That's the only thing that I.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you like to invite the HOA president for another month and a half?
And we'll have a couple others.
Yeah, I would invite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When's our next?
If there are any other items you want to throw in.
March seventh.
I hope that this won't, don't take it out.
No way.
No, 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 this.
I mean, really, it should be the HOA kind of stating their position on it and then we saying, okay, we either agree or not agree, and if we don't agree, here's why.
Well.
And it's pretty straightforward.
Just keep in mind, you can pay fourteen percent, but if you break it down to a per door charge. Okay.
Save it for the workshop.
Just saying.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, okay.
Sorry, I, I do have a question, the fourteen question, because we in the board decided, well, you gave, um. Your, your opinion that we could absorb the legal fees that from their authority.
Yes.
Because there will be a benefit. Well, they're in the position right now, they haven't made a decision that they want to move forward with the track fourteen, so I don't think. I would like this board to reconsider that decision. Of absorbing those costs because the initiative, what we were told is like, here, we're gonna give it to you. And then we said, okay, there's a benefit for us, we're gonna go ahead and take those bills. And now they're going back on it. And I don't think we should be taking those bills. If they're gonna go back on it, great.
Let's just add it to the workshop.
That's what I'm saying, so that's, that's the decision that we respect, whatever they want, but then I don't think it's fair for us to absorb those bills.
Yeah, well, my opinion was that in essence it'd be some consideration the district is paying for the conveyance.
Correct. To go on.
Yeah.
So we could, we could add that onto the workshop.
So perhaps what we could do from a staff perspective is utilize some of Tony's past invoices of examples of, this was charged to the. General Fund Incorporated and then this was. Yes.
And I tried to split them out, I only, I only have twenty different codes to apply them to.
Alright.
Anyway, uh, for that request on item number fourteen E then, is for the board to approve as request the. Uh, submitting the A G O and the draft form and substantially final form. Upon a reconfirming resolution from the Board of Directors of the Master Association, we want you to go forward. So that I can include that in the request. That's my, I think, a motion and second for that.
I thought we already did.
No, there's no motion.
Let's go.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is the Attorney General's.
We talked about it.
And Tony added a whole bunch more words.
A little bit, yeah, we have, we prove his requested upon reconfirming resolution from the Board of Directors of the desire to pursue it. Just to make sure we pin it down, especially in light of what track B fourteen issue.
And it'll be submitted next week.
Yeah, and we submit. Uh, next is, uh, my action items, I have one item, it's not on here, well, it's sort of on here, but not really. I hand delivered to Chelsea today the check for three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. In our trust account check, which means we have the cleared funds, so we can keep them following notice of dismissal on, so. We are going to have a party at my office.
No champagne.
Zach, Zach, who is Mr. Techno, does everything, his office looks like, not at that table without all the papers on it. And so, but he brought in a stack of items today, so that's good news and thank you everybody for the hard work on that. On the deeds, the district, uh, sent further emails to Charles, he must be slammed, Charles, man, I know. But yeah, I have no response back from Charles and I will keep, like every other week or every week, I'll ask him the status of that for those remaining parcels. I've heard nothing more from Lee Health. Uh, I have that final notice, I just need to get it recorded. Four line is addressed. Election documents we've talked about. The, uh, graphics and maps, we're still working on a couple more pieces on that for Pelican Reserve. Uh, over in the Cypress Grove area and at the entrance on Tree Line and going to preserve Boulevard as to whether. Not to have the landscaping performed by the district, so that's something to come back.
All of the resident issues are resolved.
Including some that were on today's agenda. Yes.
It may have another one depending on what you determine when you look for the park on Cypress. If we go back to heritage.
That's golf course.
But yes, but they've, they've already verbally agreed that they're okay with it. But the only remaining ones are a couple of little stragglers within the park reserve between us and the community association.
And keep working.
But the main one is the community association.
Yes, basically, that's all that's left.
Yes.
And we have a couple flies in the.
Which, which sort of leads and segues into the next one with regards to the, the P port agreement that's on hold. Pending all the other outstanding issues that we have, uh, with P P C A. Similar to the new service provider agreement that's on hold. Uh, I don't know if Chelsea wants to give an update about where we are in the next item, the, uh, P P C A agreement and district funds. Uh, working on having a meeting with the, between district staff and P P C A and representatives in their.
Probably gonna be March at this point, trying to get twelve people in one room, physical in one room is, uh, difficult. Especially during tax season when you have auditors.
It's harder than picking a jury.
Yeah, pretty much.
Very controversial case, it really is. Uh, Janopi Master, that's, uh. Just waiting feedback from the vendor again. FPL easement consent to use. Uh, it says us to, to use, I just need to follow up again with the person, I think I did, she came back from vacation. And I'll double, I'll make sure I follow up again, say please, give us the indication on that as to. Whether we can go forward on the Milner contract copy machines, I sent another letter out today. Uh, to Milner, they keep sending invoices, we keep saying, if we don't have a contract, we terminated it. Good luck. And, uh, come and get it or please arrange for shipment. Um, and again, we may end up having to do, I'll call almost like a county court declared to our judgment action, but that can. Go different ways, you never know. Hopefully they will come to their senses and not keep bugging us for three hundred eighty-one dollars a month or three hundred forty-eight dollars a month. Yeah. But those are the only two invoices that they sent us.
Yeah.
In the last email, which I thought was kind of interesting. But it's okay. Uh, Atlantic Southern paving, we just addressed that and took care of that. Uh, S R F construction loan, we, we had some adjustments, we took care of that. I actually have made further edits to the proposed board policies and procedures manuals. And, uh, meant to get it to Chelsea this week, but everything went awry, so that. I'm pushing that back probably another two weeks. Stony Brook, we have approval to file the A G O request, appreciate that. Uh, I did the memo on the roads and streets and dissolved POAs, I appreciate your guidance. And track B fourteen is on hold, subject to us getting final clarification from Stony Brook as to how they want to handle that. And any other questions from the board?
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
I do want to explain what happened with the B fourteen track. I had a bunch of pushback from my board. And that's why we put it on hold. They didn't want to spend any more money, they're angry at me for spending the money that we did. To do to get this over to the, uh, to the district. We're gonna be discussing our direction at our board meeting on Monday night. Would you be interested in, in taking? And just planting a seed here, because we're gonna be exploring all our options, but one of them is the possibility of splitting it up to the parcel. That runs along the sidewalk. And it would give you a greater buffer between you on the sidewalk and the, uh, waste management property. Which you're aware of, everybody's seen the bulldozer that went up and down through there. And then breaking that off from the other parcel that seems to have the problem with the, uh, invasive species. Is that a consideration, something you'd like to ponder? I know you're familiar with the property.
Well, that's under consideration.
They would, they're, he's looking at splitting the parcel, that's what he's.
That's correct, the ten foot wide strip that runs along the sidewalk.
Taking that out.
Taking that, letting you, uh, quit claiming that over to you, it's been cleaned up. And it does add to the sidewalk area and gives you more buffer. Meanwhile, uh, we don't have to deal with that other parcel right now, we'll consider that maybe for a future time what to do with it.
I think it's, I think you should have a meeting on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
And work that out with your board first.
Okay, well, let. Well, here's the thing, that when I'm gone, the people that are gonna be behind me, I could push things through right now, but when I'm gone, they probably won't want to. Quit claiming anymore. I know. But I'd like to see this happen because it benefits both of us. And in fact, um. How can I say, there's a possibility we may actually look at selling the other, the other parcel. But I don't think you want to sell the parcel on the sidewalk. You don't want somebody, you don't want, let's just put it this way, you don't want, uh. Our buddies over there at the waste management to own along your sidewalk.
County sidewalk, but.
Hmm.
It's the county sidewalk.
Oh, so county sidewalk that you're responsible.
Yeah.
To pay to fix, I know that deal.
Yeah.
Not a good one. Alright, I just want to plant the seed, ponder it, we'll talk about it and we'll get back to you.
Let us know how your meeting goes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna try.
Alright, agenda management. Um, so we'll add for the, um, March third or March seventh meeting, uh, the other half of the Stony Brook and we'll get an invite out. Formal invite out to the president, um, and their HOA board. Um, we've got some contracts that are coming up, we've got, um. A lot of, lot of projects in the month of February, so, um. Is there anything that you see on here that we need to reprioritize or shift or add anything that, um? You'd like to add to the agenda?
Now, the March seventh meeting, that's the one that we're gonna have the workshop at.
Yes, ma'am.
So that'll start at two o'clock.
Yes.
Okay, and then I think at our previous meeting, we agreed that the second one, the second meeting on the twenty-first.
Starts at four.
Starts at four.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
So go ahead and move to supervise the comments, Mr. Bob.
Oh, I don't have any comment other than say I will not be at the March seventh meeting physically, I'll be tuning in. I don't know about the twenty-first. We're going back up to mission for medical service. I'm gonna do the biopsy of the sixth. Depending on what happened with that.
Nothing.
You don't want to congratulate Bob and actually becoming a Swifty now, so that's, that's fantastic. No, I don't have anything else.
The meeting, the second meeting in April, I will not be here in person. I will be on Zoom, but I will not be here in person. We're going to go see our granddaughter's performance.
How old is she for you?
University.
How old is she?
I don't have a.
She's, uh, nineteen.
Oh, well, they're good. I started when they were six, they were terrible.
Do what?
No, this is.
Or they're, uh, lobbying.